Good evening. I would like to call to order this meeting of the West Palm Beach City Commission. Today is Monday, February 5th, 2024, and the time is 5:00 P. M. We will start this meeting out, as we do all of our meetings, with a moment of silence, Madam President, can you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to remind everyone of the rules of civility and decorum which govern this meeting. Officials shall be recognized by the Chair and shall not interrupt the Speaker. Public comments shall be addressed to the City Commission as a whole and not to any individual on the dais or in the audience. Displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatience, lack of respect and personal attacks are strictly prohibited. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, and similar demonstrations should not be permitted. Please govern yourselves accordingly, as offenders may be removed from this meeting. In addition, anyone designed to address the Commission shall file a written request with the City Clerk prior to consideration of the matter, and that person shall complete a comment card for each agenda item the person wishes to address, which shall include the person's full name, address, and the numbered agenda item. Be advised that your card won't be recognized if it is not completely filled out. All right. Thank you. Now, Mr. Faun, are there any additions, deletions, reorganization of the agenda?
No, Mayor.
Very good. We do have a couple of preliminary proclamations, and we have a big show coming up. Item 6.1, I will... During these challenging times that seem increasingly uncertain, 211's highly trained and accredited staff continue to be frontline responders available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. 211 is that central access number where individuals and families can find life-saving crisis support, guidance, and hope, and tens of thousands of people reach out to them annually. 211 also offers specialized advocacy and support programs, including caregiver support, Help Me Grow, elder crisis outreach, and 211's life-saving Sunshine Daily Calls for lonely and isolated seniors and caregivers. 211 is also the infrastructure and responder for the 988 Lifeline number and additional support lines that include first responders and My Florida Vet for veterans with peer-to-peer support and assistance. So I, Keith A. James, Mayor of the City of West Palm Beach, do hereby proclaim February 11 through 17, 2024, as 211 Awareness Week, and here to accept this proclamation is Sharon LaHerrault, President and CEO of 211 Palm Beach and Treasure Coast. Sharon?
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Let me get down there and join you, so we can take a nice picture, and then I'll let you talk.[271.41][271.41](applause) (inaudible). If your notes are over there, that's fine.
Mayor, City Staff, thank you so much for this recognition on behalf of the life-saving and life-changing work that we do every day. It's a pleasure to be here, especially today with such a full house, and thank you for helping to raise awareness so that everyone in West Palm Beach knows that getting help is as easy as dialing 211. As mentioned, we responded to over 120,000 requests for help last year alone. Of those, we are responding to between 12 and 13 suicide-related calls each and every day. Also, as mentioned, we are the responders for the 988 number, the newly-launched number in 2022. Since that line has launched, the volume on that line has increased about 50%. So we are grateful to be able to be here. We are sorry to see so many people struggling, but again, want to make sure that everyone does know that our caring team is here every hour of every day. Thank you so much.
Thank you.[364.53][364.53](applause) Now, I would also like to pay tribute to Mac Fabrics on their 65th anniversary. Mac Fabrics is a pioneer family-owned business that opened its doors 65 years ago in 1959 on Clumatta Street. For six and one-half decades, Mac Fabrics has provided gainful employment opportunities, contributed to the city's tax base, and has served residents during America's historic golden age of sewing through today. In the '70s and '80s, they expanded their original family retail investment into a new 10,000-square-foot retail space on Clumatta Street. In 2017, Sandy Costello, an industry force in the fabric and textile industry and owner of several other national retail businesses, took ownership of Mac Fabrics. Five decades later, the Costello family moved Mac Fabric to the city's historic Northwood Village retail area. In 2017, Mac Fabrics evolved, expanded, and was rebranded to Mac Fabrics &amp; Design Center with new product lines to better serve the home decor needs. In 2023, Mac Fabrics &amp; Design Center again expanded with the opening of Mac Home and the opening of Mac Fabric Outlet Store. Mac Fabric Custom Upholstery Workshop was launched leasing in an 8,000-square-foot building that provides additional employment in its high-tech facility, as well as providing internships for tradesmen and college students in the design industry. I, Keith A. James, Mayor of the City of West Palm Beach, do hereby pay tribute to Mac Fabrics on their 65th anniversary celebration.[463.47][463.47](applause) Congratulations.
Thank you so much.[466.47][466.47](inaudible).
We'll cover it.
No, no, it's just, it was still...
All right, okay. You want to say a few words?
Yes.
Go right here.
I'd like to thank the Mayor and the Commissioners, and we certainly appreciate this award. It's a wonderful thing to have a 65-year historical company in West Palm Beach, and we are so appreciative for the multi-generational customers that we have had, and we're so happy to be a small business and support the city. Thank you so much again, everybody.[511.62][511.62](applause)
So, in acknowledgement of Black History Month, my fellow City Commissioners and I have chosen community honorees to accept proclamations as part of our highlighting heritage serities. So I'm honored to begin with my honoree, Senator Bobby Powell. Stay safe.[537.41][537.41](applause) Let me say a few things about Senator Powell, and then we'll take a picture, then I'll turn over the mic to Senator Powell, which maybe was... Yes. State Senator Bobby Powell Jr. was elected to the Florida Senate in 2016, following two terms in the Florida House of Representatives. Senator Powell served as a Senate Minority Democratic Pro temp from 2020 to 2022, elected by his peers. During that same time period, he also served as the Chairman of the Florida Legislative Black Caucus, which consisted of 27 black state legislators representing nearly every area of the state. Senator Powell is a recognized leader in the legislature as well as in his community. In 2016, he was appointed to the Public Service Commission Nominating Committee and later reappointed. Senator Powell was involved in community and professional development organizations such as various chambers of commerce and Leadership Palm Beach County, where he received the Leadership Excellence Award. A native of Palm Beach County and resident of West Palm Beach, Senator Powell has focused on creating opportunities for housing, community health, early childhood education, mental health, and improving the infrastructure of our communities. He has done this with legislation, appropriations, and advocacy, and as a Senator, has secured well over $100 million in funds brought back to Palm Beach County. His motto is "A life of service is a life that counts," and it guides his moral compass and works at in his work as a dedicated public servant. So I am proud to present this proclamation to Senator Bobby Powell.[637.04][637.04](applause)
I'll say a couple of words. So, one, two, it is such an honor to receive this award from a trailblazer himself. Mayor Keith James, myself, and many of our elected officials, as well as community leaders, look up to you as not only an elected official, but the first strong black mayor of West Palm Beach. We thank you. We acknowledge the previous elected officials. I acknowledge Mr. Thomas, who is a former mayor, but you being the first strong black mayor, you really have set the bar for many of us. I stand on the shoulders of the giants who came before me, who are my ancestors. I recognize today my family, my wife, my mother-in-law, my daughter... Say hi. My Aunt Edith Bush, and our crew from the MLK Coordinating Committee, and I just say that Daniel Burnham, the father of planning... I'm an urban planner, by the way. Said, "Make no small plans, for they lack the fire to make men's blood boil. Together, we can achieve all things and will do abundantly more." I remind everybody that I am thankful to stand in this stead today. I'm thankful to be your Senator, thankful to continue to represent you. I'm also running for County Commission, but that's another seat. But I also recognize that without you all, none of this is possible, and it truly is a life of service is a life that counts. Our greatest investment is in people. Remember that. Thank you, Mayor James, and thank you Commissioners as well.[792.23][792.23](applause)
Okay, now we'll turn it over to Commission President, Shalonda Warren.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and I'm going to work very hard to abbreviate my comments because there is so much that I could say. I won't acknowledge that I have three and a half pages.[826.69][826.69](laughter) I won't acknowledge that, but that lets you know that I'm going to talk about a legend and an inspiration here in Palm Beach County. The Honorable Judge Cherie Davis Cunningham, born in New Jersey, and she attended Rutgers, and then she went on to graduate from Howard University because she recognized Howard to be the finest in the country. Howard is the center of Washington and the center of national policymaking, and during summer, she worked for the U.S. Commission on Civil Rights and for a law firm. After law school, she clerked for the Honorable Paul H. Rooney, former Chief Judge for the 11th Circuit Court of Appeals. She began her career as a prosecutor with the Hillsborough County State Attorney's Office in 1983. She moved to Palm Beach County and then joined the State Attorney's Office in 1985. Once here, she ascended through the ranks and prosecuted the most serious offenses as part of the Major's Crimes Unit. In 1993, the late Governor Lawton Childs appointed Cherie Davis Cunningham to the Palm Beach County Court bench, the first-ever African-American woman to be seated as a judge in Florida's 15th Judicial Court. For the next 26 years, she faithfully served the citizens of Palm Beach County until her retirement in November 2019. Not only did Judge Cunningham's appointment diversify the bench, but it also paved the way for countless African-American lawyers, judges, and women that you see represented here today. She has selfishly mentored many aspiring young lawyers, modeling the importance of integrity, honesty, and dedication. A devout Christian, she committed to God and her family. She marks her most significant achievements as her three children, Whitney, Kendall, and Frank. Judge Cunningham is admired as one who exemplifies grace, professionalism, ethics, and respect for others. A trailblazer by any measure, her integrity, compassion, and fairness are embedded into the legal community. Judge Cunningham's awards include recognition among Florida's 25 most influential and prominent black women, the Heritage Leadership Award for Outstanding Community Service, the F. Malcolm Cunningham Senior Bar Association's Thurgood Marshall Award, and Commendation for Extraordinary Commitment to Fairness in the Criminal Justice System. She's a member of Tabernacle Church here in West Palm Beach, where she serves on the Board of Directors of the U. B. Kinsey Education and Community Center. Judge Cunningham is a member of Palm Beach County Chapter of the Links, the National Bar Association, the F. Malcolm Cunningham Senior Bar Association, the Palm Beach County Bar Association, and last but not least, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. In February 2022, the Cherie Davis Cunningham Black Women Lawyers Association was formed and named in Judge Cunningham's honor. More than two dozen black female lawyers in Palm Beach County made history by forming Palm Beach County's Cherie Davis Cunningham Black Women Lawyers Association, also called SDCBWLA, the first black women lawyers association in Palm Beach County. The organization's charter members include, we see, Celia Smith Gordon here, Ava Parker, Lawanda Warren, Ethel Isaacs Williams, Dawn Nguyen, among others. In May 1994, the Palm Beach County Bar stated, "Our newest judge has for years liked to read inspirational books. She is in herself an inspiration to us all." And so here, now, in 2024, 30 years later, West Palm Beach is a better place due to the inspiration of the Honorable Judge Cherie Davis Cunningham. Purple often represents a symbol of loyalty, hope, faith, courage, strength, and much, much more. And to quote Alice Walker, I think it makes... And I'm going to change this up a little bit. Says, "I think it makes God angry if you walk past the color purple in the field somewhere and you don't notice it." And today, the color purple that you see represented on our chests, represented by a lot of people here in the audience today, are in tribute to the Cherie Davis Cunningham Black Women Lawyers Association, and a tribute to Judge Cunningham, because we recognize the strength of the signal, of the color purple, and the strength of Judge Cunningham, and everything that it has taken for you to step forward, to blaze the trails that you have, to be an inspiration without knowing that you were being an inspiration, but to make sure that you provided a way for so many people that have come behind you. I see judges that are here that have come behind you, attorneys that have come behind you, and so many other people that have been inspired. So when I think of inspiration, I absolutely think of you, Judge Cunningham. Thank you for all that you do, and will you please join me in acknowledging Judge Cunningham? And if you would join me, that's fine.[1166.83][1166.83](applause)
It is indeed my pleasure to be here, Mr. Mayor, Commission President, the Commissioners present, honorees here in this attending audience, and family, friends, and community leaders. I am honored. I am humbled. It has always been my pleasure to serve the people of Palm Beach County. This is a beautiful place in which we live, but it's only when we really do work together that it can only get better. And so I ask at this time that we all try to offer our best, that we all try to do our best, that we be our best, and we give our best to someone else. When we help people along the way, it makes life living so much better, and that has been my blessing. Whatever I've done, I did not set out to do. All I did was try to be used every day to improve the lot of someone else. I have been blessed, fortunately blessed, by many peoples whose shoulders I stood upon as trailblazers. They opened up the door for me, they opened up their offices, they opened up their hearts, and they gave me direction and mentorship, and that's what we have to do for our young people. We must be there for them, we cannot forsake them. This is a wonderful place in which we live. This can be a better place as we nurture our young people. And so, as I stand here now, with my family as well, I have Emmett here, my daughter Whitney, my granddaughter Zora, my son-in-law, Tashanka, I'm so blessed. I have the ladies from the Cherie Davis Cunningham Black Women Lawyers Association here supporting me. I have family and friends here, and it's really when you have people that are in your corner that you know life is not in vain. And so, now, I say to you, this Black History Month, that all of us must make certain that we know our history, that we share our history, and that we protect our history, because no one can tell it better than us. Happy Black History Month to each and every one of you, and thank you.[1315.15][1315.15](applause)
Thank you, Judge Cunningham, and congratulations. Now I'll turn it over to Commissioner Kathleen Ward.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to go after President Warren and that speech. My bad, Eric.[1338.21][1338.21](laughter) My honoree this evening is Mr. Eric Kelly. For those of you who do not have the pleasure of knowing Mr. Kelly, he's the President of Quantum Foundation, an organization with a mission to advance health and healthcare access, education, and community betterment for the residents of Palm Beach County, and it's based along Australian Avenue in District 1. He holds a Bachelor of Science in Communications from Florida State, a Master's in Nonprofit Management from FAU, and a Master's coursework in Biblical Studies at Moody Bible Institute and Southeastern Theology Theological Seminary. He has worked in state government and for several nonprofit foundations. Eric has served as Chairman of the Healthy Start Coalition of Palm Beach County, the Board and Executive Committee of the Economic Council of Palm Beach County, and as a member of the Board of Trustees of Philanthropy Southeast. And that's just a brief snapshot, thanks to a Google search. Clearly, he isn't one to brag, because all that information was found on other people's websites and not on Quantums. It's not at all frustrating when trying to write a speech about someone and not being able to find a bio on their website. I'm sure everyone is familiar with the phrase "seeing is believing." Any person operating in the field of human rights or community activism can probably attest that you can become knowledgeable on a topic by reading scholarly texts, or articles, or listening to lectures, get a degree, but in order to truly work towards solutions, at a very minimum, you need to see the problem firsthand, and at best, experience it or live it. Trying to solve a problem from the outside looking in is almost never effective, and when I moved back home and started attending chamber events, BDB events, Economic Council events, and even though as someone in my 20s at the time, I was incredibly intimidated, I wanted to engage with some of those local people working on the frontlines to change people's lives in our community, and naturally, I noticed Eric. He doesn't speak just to speak, mostly, I actually noticed him listening, but when he does speak, you know right away, he speaks as someone who isn't looking from the outside in, but as someone who struggled, persevered, educated himself, and uses all of that knowledge to help others. Eric, I look forward to continuing to work to effectuate positive change in our community, and I feel privileged I get to work with you in accomplishing that goal.[1473.96][1473.96](applause)
the life that I get to live. Thank you.[1529.11][1529.11](applause)
Okay, we will now turn it over to Commissioner Kristy Fox.
Thank you, Mayor. Rosalynn Seiya Baker-Barnes is a Florida native who has practiced law for more than 20 years. She is a proud lawyer and shareholder at Cersei Denny, Skirrullah, Barnhart, and Shipley here in West Palm Beach, and the chairperson of the firm's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. She's a proud double graduate of Florida State University, where she was a member of the moot court team and was selected as a Virgil Hawkins Academic Fellow. Seiya and her husband, attorney Edrick Barnes, live here in West Palm Beach with their three children. They serve as parent ambassadors and patrons at their children's school, the King's Academy. They also volunteer as scout parents and patrons of the Boy Scouts of America PAC 116 and Troop 4116 scouting troops, and are active members and patrons of Tabernacle Missionary Baptist Church. Seiya comes from a family of public servants who instilled in her the importance of education, leading by example, and giving back to her community at an early age. Seiya was the 95th president of the 3,000-member of High Beach County Bar Association, and the first African-American woman to serve in this role. Her signature program was "You've Been Served," lawyers answering the summons to community service, designed to emphasize the importance of community service and recognize the positive impact lawyers make in their communities and beyond. She has successfully led legal organizations, community organizations, and is a longtime mentor to lawyers, law students, and aspiring lawyers. She was the 2022 recipient of one of the Florida Bar's highest honors, the Henry T. Latimer Diversity Award, given to an individual who exhibits visionary and insightful leadership throughout the state to resolve inequities in the legal community and the community at large. She is also a recipient of the Palm Beach County Florida Association of Women's Lawyers' Highest Honor, the prestigious Justice Barbara Periante Award, which is presented to an individual or organization demonstrating a strong commitment to promoting women in the legal community. In 2021, Seiya co-founded and became the inaugural president of the Palm Beach County Cherie Davis Cunningham Black Women Lawyers Association, leading its mission to provide mentorship, support, and encouragement for members to seek positions of leadership at every level. Most recently, Seiya has become the president-elect designate of the Florida Bar after being elected without opposition. She will be the first African-American female to serve in this role in the Florida Bar's history, dating back to 1889. The Florida Bar is the organization of all lawyers licensed by the Florida Supreme Court to practice law in the state comprising over 111,000 members. Seiya will begin her term as President in 2025 and work to advance their mission throughout the state. In one of her interviews about this historic role, she said, "I can do the greatest good by being an asset to those who will come after me. That is one of my goals, hopefully, as President, is to try to help bridge the gap for our young lawyers of all backgrounds to be successful. We have to invest in their success." Mother, daughter, sister, wife, lawyer, community champion, and President, for leading by example, raising the bar and making history, as well as being one of the kindest people you will ever meet, and the chicest woman to ever wear a Boy Scout uniform, I am so honored to recognize Seiya Baker-Barnes, and thank you for all that you do.[1740.03][1740.03](applause)
I almost wore my Scout uniform today, but I figured it might not be appropriate for the Commission meeting. Mayor James, Commissioner Fox, President of the Commission, Warren, and Commissioners, family, friends, and guests, thank you all so much for this incredible honor. I actually want to dedicate my recognition today to Judge Cunningham.
I actually want to dedicate my recognition today to Judge Cunningham. She is my mentor, my inspiration. She is one of the reasons I stand here before you today. She has always supported me, helped me. She is actually the, if you were to look up mentor in a dictionary, you would see her. So I just want to thank you today, because you have helped me in times when I felt like I couldn't do it. You have encouraged me at times when I doubted myself, and you have constantly been there for me, and so many in this community. And, you know, that's why we founded our organization, because Judge Cunningham exemplifies what we can all do in this community to help others, no matter what our profession is. And we often tell our scouts, my children are here today, my son Eden is waving at me, you know, to do your best. That is their Scout motto, to do your best. And that is what Judge Cunningham has always done, that is what I have tried to do in my career, and I know so many in our organization do. My family is also here this evening, they're split up, my husband Edrick, my daughter Sally, and my daughter Emery, my son Eden, and I want to thank my Cherie Cunningham family for being here tonight, and just thank you all for this recognition.
I also forgot to congratulate you, Eric. Thank you. You said so few words, I was in shock, but congratulations to you, sir. Okay, now Commissioner Joseph Paduzzi.
Thank you, Mayor. My honoree today is Owen Robinson. Now, before I get into Owen's formal bio, I just wanted to take a moment to tell you about the man that I know. Even though I've only known Owen for a few short years, he has come to be a close friend and confidant. He is always willing to lend his ear to his friends, and he always has sage advice. Owen is of Jamaican descent, he grew up in this area, and then moved to North Carolina. He returned to West Palm Beach a few years ago, and in that short time, he has moved mountains. Owen is the president of the West Palm Beach Rotary Club, one of the oldest service organizations in the state, and certainly the oldest service organization here in the city of West Palm Beach. He is the first black president of the organization in its 100-plus-year history. He is also the first black district governor-elect of Rotary. Owen has a daughter and a son ages 20 and 23. Now, to get into his formal bio, Owen is an accomplished entrepreneur with over 20 years of experience in technology, healthcare, computer, mortgage, and consulting industries. He holds a Bachelor of Science degree in Electrical Engineering from the University of Central Florida, as well as a Master's in Communication Technology. As a dynamic executive officer, Owen has excelled in all facets of executive business management. He has a remarkable ability to envision and implement long-term organizational objectives, demonstrating his expertise in strategic planning. In his role as an executive officer, Owen provides critical career counseling, coaching, and job seeker services, making a significant impact on the professional development of individuals. His skill set includes creating both long-term and short-term business strategies, as well as assisting organizations in preparing feasibility studies, project development plans, and optimizing personnel resources. Additionally, he has extensive experience in conducting cost analysis, facility planning, capacity planning, and milestone scheduling. I'm not really sure what all that means, actually, but it seems impressive to me. Owen firmly believes in the power of community involvement, and has dedicated his time and expertise to numerous nonprofit organizations. Over the past 15 years, he has chaired numerous committees and has successfully implemented and directed the first-ever summer enrichment program for Boys and Girls Home of North Carolina. Currently, he serves as a mentor, actively maintaining relationships with young men and women in his community. His commitment to community service is further demonstrated through his membership in numerous organizations, including the Big Brother Club, Rotary, Path to College, National Society of Engineers, Institute of Electrical and Electronic Engineers, Junior Achievement, Board of Trustees for the Boys and Girls Home, Board Member for Craft Y MCA, Chairman for Fleming Academy Charter and UCF Alumni. Owen's involvement in these organizations showcases his dedication to making a positive impact and contributing to the betterment of society. With his extensive experience and strong commitment to community, Owen continues to thrive in business while making a difference in the lives of individuals and the community. It is my absolute honor today to recognize Mr. Owen Robinson this evening. Thank you.
I do want to thank you for selecting me for this opportunity. It's definitely an honor, and I'm humbled. He didn't tell me about this, because I don't like public speaking. But he mentioned Rotary, and I have to take this minute to plug Rotary. If you have never been to a Rotary meeting, please join us. And we meet at the drive shack, and as Joe said, we are one of the oldest organizations, civic organization in Florida. Through Rotary, I have done some incredible things, so I can't say I'm taking the credit. Having a body of individuals that literally thinks the same, make this world a better place. When I started my business, I wanted to give back. I didn't want to wait till I retired, because tomorrow's not promised to anyone. So I joined an organization that will hold me accountable to do that. And through Rotary, I have done projects, not only locally, but also internationally. So 1.4 million people in Rotary, it's going over 200 countries. So I have done projects in Africa, Jamaica, next month, I'm going to Dominican Republic. I've been doing project there for the past 11 years. And then domestically, we are doing project every month. So if you haven't heard of Rotary, please join us, and give back to your community. Appreciate it. Thank you.
And now we'll turn it over to Commissioner Christina Lambert.
Thank you. Good evening. It is with great pride and enthusiasm as we gather to celebrate Black History Month and honor a remarkable individual who has not only left an indelible mark on our community, but who has also become a beacon of inspiration to many others. Today, we pay tribute to the extraordinary Beray Eminent Allbritton, a West Palm Beach resident who embodies the spirit of resilience, entrepreneurship, and community investment. Beray's journey is a testament to the limitless power and potential that exists within our own community. Her initial foray into the professional world was in a business development role within the healthcare field, where she dedicated 11 years of her life contributing to the well-being of others. However, it was Beray's entrepreneurial spirit that truly set her on a remarkable path in our city. Transitioning into the world of clothing design, she ventured into uncharted territory and thrived, becoming a multi-company entrepreneur who has significantly impacted the landscape of West Palm Beach. Over her impressive 13-year career, Beray has not only built a successful business, but has also invested into the very fabric of our city. Beray Allbritton's commitment to our community is evident in the acquisition of multiple commercial properties in West Palm Beach, from Eminent Beauty Lab, to Eminent Business Suite, to Eminent Salon Suites, Eminent 4.0, and the Allbritton 2, which empowers 22 women-led business tenants. She has helped to reshape the entrepreneurial landscape within our city, creating spaces for growth, innovation, and collaboration. As we celebrate Black History Month, let us acknowledge and honor Beray Allbritton, a young woman whose journey exemplifies the power of determination, entrepreneurship, and community investment. May her story inspire us all to reach new heights and strengthen the bonds that make West Palm Beach a city where we are all proud to call home. Please help me in honoring Beray.
So I'd like to thank the city of West Palm Beach and Christina Lambert for the wonderful recognition. Thanks to my parents, Mike Allbritton and Diane Gamble, and my bonus mom siblings and friends for coming to celebrate me and always supporting my sporadic business decisions. Being in business for 13 years and growing in West Palm Beach has been a pleasure. It's a great feeling to be noticed along with these great list of nominees, after seat, not nominees, honorees. Seeing that made me like super nervous, but it also let me know that I'm going in the right direction. I want to thank you all for noticing me, and thank you, thank you, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you would join me in another round of applause for all of our honorees. Now, I'm sure all of you would love to stay here and see us do the official business of the city, and watch the sausage be made, but if you choose not to, we're going to give everyone a few minutes to leave before we resume getting into the meat of our agenda. Thank you all for coming, and again, congratulations to all the honorees. Ladies and gentlemen, can y'all take pictures outside, please? We got to get back to doing our business. We love you. Okay. If you can make your way out quietly, please. We'll now reconvene, the city commission meeting. We'll turn to the consent calendar, items 7.1 through 7.5. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments on consent? 7.1 through 7.5. All right, can you try to, all right, hearing, do we have any cards? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we accept consent calendar as presented, item 7.1 through 7.5.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in the second of discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 8.1, Resolution Number 4D-24F, amending the fiscal year 2023's 2024 general fund budget to recognize a parking meter donation in the amount of $9,793.51 for Martin Luther King Jr. Day, January 15, 2024, and appropriating the funds for a donation to the Martin Luther King Jr. Caregivers. Mr. Davis.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Ed Davis, City West Palm Beach Parking Administrator. It always gives me the pleasure to show up here in front of you this time of the year to seek your approval of this resolution to approve the funds of the parking meter revenues to the Martin Luther King Caregivers Association. This is all the money that is collected from the on-street parking meters and parking collection areas on street on the Martin Luther King or MLK Day. So with that said, I just seek your approval for this resolution in the amount of $9,793.51 this year.
Very good. Thank you. Any comments, questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of Resolution Number 40-24F.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in the second of discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Do you have a presentation to make, Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. If you would be, join us, we'd like you to present the check to the Martin Luther King Caregivers Association with the President, Ms. Edith Bush.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Bush, will you join us? Want to say a few words?
Yes, sir.
All right.
On behalf of the Martin Luther King Coordinating Committee's Caregivers Program, we are grateful to the Lake William Bill Moss for his care for those in need. We will continue to carry out his legacy with our partnership with Two One One, Victoria Gardens Senior Citizens Complex, the Trinity United Methodist Church, and other sick and shut-in ministries. We thank you so much, much, Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners, for allowing us to continue the Martin Luther King Junior Caregivers Ministry. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you for all the work that you do, Mrs. Bush. Item eight point two, resolution number twenty-four dash twenty-four, approving the conveyance agreement for property located at fourteen hundred Henrietta Avenue to the West Palm Beach Housing Authority for the construction of an affordable rental housing development, and resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-four, approving a pre-development grant agreement and funding to the West Palm Beach Housing Authority in a sum not to exceed two hundred fifty thousand dollars for the construction of an affordable rental housing development located at fourteen hundred Henrietta Avenue.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Kimberly Spence, Assistant Director of Housing and Community Development. Pardon my voice, I'm getting over a cold. As stated, this evening, I'm presenting two resolutions. The first is for approval of the conveyance of city-owned property located at fourteen hundred Henrietta Avenue to the West Palm Beach Housing Authority. And the second resolution is for the award of a grant of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for pre-development costs for development of a affordable rental housing project on the site. These, this project was brought to you initially in December of twenty twenty-two at a Mayor Commission work session, where the Commission supported the partnership between the city and the Housing Authority for the redevelopment of the site. And on May one, twenty twenty-three, the Commission also approved the surplus of the property and authorized the department to negotiate terms for conveyance of the property to the Housing Authority. Just a little bit more background, the property, as you can see here, is at fourteen hundred Henrietta, which is at the intersection of L.A. Kirksey and Henrietta Avenue. The parcel is currently vacant. It's about one point nine acres in size and location, located in Commission District One. The project that's been proposed by the Housing Authority is for the construction of a eighteen-unit townhome community, which is a low-rise multifamily project with a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. The target population is for homeless individuals or families, as well as persons at risk of homelessness. And generally, the income levels will be at eighty percent or less of area median income. The project timeline is scheduled to begin construction December of this year, estimated to last approximately two years, with a completion date of March twenty twenty-six. As you know, our code does include an ordinance for the sale, transfer, or lease of city property. According to that ordinance, because this property is being conveyed to another governmental entity, no appraisal is required for the conveyance. Also, because the city property will be used for construction of housing, the conveyance can be approved by resolution. So, tonight, I, we are seeking a single majority vote for the disposal of the property. The conveyance, both the conveyance agreement and the grant agreement were included in a packet to you, but I would also like to highlight some terms and conditions. As it relates to the conveyance agreement, as I mentioned before, the parcel will be used for the redevelopment of affordable rental housing. There's also a rent restriction, which is enforced through restrictive covenant that will be recorded in a parcel, requiring affordability for a minimum of forty years. Also, the parcel will be transferred to the West Palm Beach Housing Authority via a special warranty deed. That deed includes a reverter clause that will require to transfer off the property back to the city if construction is not completed within thirty months of the closing date. Regarding the grant, the funding source for the grant is the Housing Trust Fund, which is a local funding source. The grant will be used for pre-development expenses, which includes costs such as architectural, engineering, and professional service fees to prepare the plans and drawings for the project. The purpose of this grant is to initiate the pre-development work while the Housing Authority secures the other financing needed for the project. And this project is estimated at just over six million dollars. So, with that, staff recommends approval of resolution number twenty-four dash twenty-four and twenty-five dash twenty-four, approving conveyance of the property to the Housing Authority and approving a pre-development grant not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Any questions?
Thank you, thank you for that presentation. Do we have any similar projects like this anywhere in the city, serving this level of resident?
Yes, we have done similar projects to this, where we've conveyed property as well to the Housing Authority. That was a project for homeownership, but it's been our practice where we've done conveyance to other local, to other nonprofits or government entities.
Well, it's not the conveyance, it's the fact, the target audience for the units.
No, this is the first that of, since I've been with the city and that I know of, that we've been doing a project specifically geared towards persons experiencing homelessness and.
That, that's the point. Those who are experiencing homelessness or at risk of experiencing homelessness.
Correct.
That is a very serious problem in our city, and I applaud the Department for coming up with such a unique, out-of-the-box thinking approach to addressing that problem. I know it's only sixteen units, but it's a start.
It is.
And we have to, every thousand-mile journey begins with the first step, and we're taking the first step tonight, assuming that this is approved. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this item? We do have one card, Michael Cleveland.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor. My concerns was addressed during the staff comments presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of resolution number twenty-four dash twenty-four and resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-four.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It was moved in second of discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine point one, public hearing and first reading of ordinance number five zero eight three dash twenty-four, a city-initiated request to change the future land use designation of the area generally bounded by the parcels south of Pine Street to the north, Fourteenth Street to the south, North Flagler Drive to the east, and North Dixie Highway to the west, consisting of seventeen point three five acres from multifamily MF and commercial C to mixed-use MU for the purpose of expanding the boundaries of the Curry Mixed-Use District. Now, as I recall, you want to do a single presentation for the next three.
Correct, thank you.
I'm going to read all three into the record now.
Yes.
So, that's nine point one. Nine point two. Public hearing and first reading of ordinance number five zero eight four dash twenty-four, a city-initiated request to rezone certain parcels in an area generally bounded by the parcels south of Pine Street to the north, Fourteenth Street to the south, North Flagler Drive to the east, and North Dixie Highway to the west, and consisting of plus or minus ten point one one acres from Professional Office Residential, POR, and General Commercial, GC, to Curry Mixed-Use District Core One Subdistrict and Curry Mixed-Use District Transition Subdistrict. And item nine point three, public hearing and first reading of ordinance number five zero eight five dash twenty-four, a city-initiated request for a text amendment to the zoning and land development regulations to expand the boundaries of the Curry Mixed-Use District, CMUD, and to provide for additional height bonus incentives within the district. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Linda Louie, Principal Planner, for the record. So, this is first reading of the ordinances related to the Curry Mixed-Use District, or CMUD South Expansion. The proposed ordinances before you tonight are the Future Land Use Map Amendment, the Rzoning, and the Zoning Code Text Amendment to provide for the expansion of the district. So, to start off, the city has three mixed-use districts all located within the north end of the city. We have the Broadway Mixed-Use District in red, the Northwood Mixed-Use District in green, and the Curry Mixed-Use District in blue, which is the district being considered for the expansion tonight. So, just to provide you with a quick summary of the history of CMUD, the Curry Mixed-Use District is a mixed-use redevelopment area created in two thousand and two, and it's comprised of approximately fifty point seven acres. The current boundaries of CMUD is identified in the dark yellow color in the map. So, the district went through two amendments, two major amendments, the first one being in twenty fourteen, and the second in twenty twenty-one, and that was to increase the building height. The purpose of the amendment was to provide opportunities to stimulate growth and redevelopment activity that was lacking within the district. So, since the last amendment, the city has seen an increase in development interest within the city, as evidenced by the recent approvals of two major mixed-use development projects in the district. We have the Curry Plot Four, which is Jeff Green's property, highlighted in yellow here, and the Olara Mixed-Use Project. And we also have a number of other projects in the pipeline currently being reviewed by staff. So, this has spurred a lot of development interest within CMUD, and now, staff is proposing to expand the boundaries of CMUD to the south. The proposed expansion area is hatched in this map, and it's generally bounded by the parcels south on Pine Street to the north, Fourteenth Street to the south, Flagler Drive to the east, and North Dixie Highway to the west. The expansion area is comprised of twenty-four parcels totaling seventeen point three five acres. If the expansion area is approved, the total CMUD area would increase from fifty point seven acres to sixty-eight point oh eight acres. So, as provided in my summary at Agenda Review, the changes to expect if the CMUD South Expansion Area is approved would be the application of the CMUD regulations to the expansion area. Some of the CMUD regulations that are currently not available outside of CMUD that would apply if the expansion area is approved would include the option for bonus building height through the CMUD Height Incentive Program, greater development flexibility for individual projects. So, currently, under the CMUD regulations, density and FAR requirements are not applicable for individual projects. And it also encourages the mixing of uses in mixed-use development projects. So, the first application to enable the expansion of CMUD is the Future Land Use Map Amendment, or Ordinance Fifty Eighty-three Twenty-four. The parcels within the expansion area must be changed to mixed-use, a mixed-use land use designation, which is a land use designation consistent with the mixed-use districts in the city, including CMUD. So, this requires a change in the future land use designation of the parcel areas within the expansion area, which is highlighted by this perforated black line, from mixed, multifamily in brown and commercial to mixed-use, which is this periwinkle color. In terms of the level of service analysis, the state requires a level of service analysis for all future land use map amendments, and that's to determine if there is sufficient capacity with public facilities servicing the area to accommodate the proposed future land use change. The level of service analysis is based on the maximum development potential of the future land use designation. So, for the overall CMUD, there's currently a development cap for the entire district that will not change if the expansion area is approved. So, these caps cannot be exceeded. The current caps are four thousand and sixty-three residential units and two point three million square feet of commercial. The number of vested units and commercial square footage are currently well below these caps. So, right now, we're at thirty-two point nine percent for residential and six point six percent for commercial. From staff's analysis, the future land use amendment would reduce the amount of development permitted for the entire proposed CMUD area that will positively affect the impact on public facilities. So, as an exercise, staff analyzed the current and proposed maximum development potential for the entire proposed CMUD area versus the current land use. As shown in this table, this is staff's analysis and the summary here, there would be a reduction in a hundred and forty-one residential units and four hundred and twenty-one, four hundred and forty-three thousand square feet of commercial use. So, the impacts would be less with the mixed-use future land use designation. The second ordinance is ordinance Fifty Eighty-four Twenty-four, and it's for the rezoning of certain parcels within the expansion area. This is required for the consistency with the proposed future land use map amendment to mixed-use, and it would also enable development under the CMUD regulations for the parcels in the expansion area. The rezoning would rezone parcels from Professional Office Residential, which is in orange here, and General Commercial to CMUD Core One for the parcels along Flagler Drive and CMUD Transition for the parcels, for the other parcels within the expansion area. The only parcel that will not be rezoned is the Flagler Point condominium, which is located at the north end of the expansion area, and that's currently zoned a planned development. It's zoned Professional Office Planned Development. This slide shows the adopted CMUD zoning subdistricts and allowable building heights within the district. The parcels within the expansion area would be rezoned to Core One or Transition. The Core One Subdistrict has a base height or a height permitted by right of a hundred and eleven feet, but there's also the option of obtaining bonus height up to a maximum of three hundred and six feet within the district. For the Transition Subdistrict, the base height is eighty-five feet with the option of obtaining additional bonus height up to a maximum of a hundred and sixty-three feet. So, as noted in my previous slide, the current parcels within the expansion area are zoned General Commercial and Professional Office Residential. Under the current General Commercial zoning, there's no height restriction unless it's abutting a residential zoning district, which it does not. And under the current Professional Office Residential zoning, there is a height limitation of forty feet or two feet in height for each one feet, foot in height from the side and rear property lines, whichever is greater. So, there is a little bit of flexibility in terms of building height for the POR zoning district. As for the Flagler Point condominium, the existing building height is a hundred and twelve feet or nine stories, which is consistent with the base height of the core subdistricts within CMUD along Flagler Drive. In terms of staff's analysis for the rezoning, staff looked at the zoning and general development pattern of the current CMUD boundaries and of the expansion area. CMUD and the CMUD South Expansion Area is also in close proximity to downtown. It's less than a quarter mile away, and it would be consistent with the high-rise buildings that would connect downtown to the Curry Mixed-Use District. In analyzing the proposed appropriate or proposed zoning reclassification of the parcels within the expansion area, the highest densities and intensities is along Flagler Drive south of Twenty-Sixth Street, and therefore, the logical rezoning of the parcels along Flagler Drive is, you know, Core One. The parcels along South Dixie Highway, not fronting on Flagler Drive, are designated Transition because it's more compatible with the shorter building heights and densities along Dixie, and it also provides for a better transition from the more intensive designations east within the district. So, the third and final ordinance is ordinance Fifty Eighty-five Twenty-four. This is for the text amendment to the zoning and land development regulations to include the proposed expansion area into the CMUD regulations. The amendment will only affect Section Ninety-five Two Fifteen, which is the code section for the CMUD regulations. So, in addition to incorporating the expansion area into the regulations, there are also a few other amendments that staff is proposing. And these include two new building height incentives to the existing height bonus program within the district, which I will go over in the next couple of slides. But the new incentives proposed are for the Flagler Drive seawall improvement and the Flagler Drive roadway improvement. These incentives stem from the importance of repairing the aging infrastructure. It's currently reaching a critical stage, and with sea level rise, it's becoming an increasing concern. So, these incentives are meant to speed up these improvements. Staff is also proposing to increase the minimum and maximum building setbacks along North Dixie Highway, and that's to accommodate more landscaping and streetscape improvements. It'll also provide opportunities to enhance the streetscape with the potential to encourage the desired revitalization. And finally, the elimination of the requirement for the developer to complete the construction of the. of the Northwood Road Extension by November 2026, which is a hard deadline. This is a height incentive within the district. It has become evident that the timeline currently adopted in text is not reasonable. It's not feasible due to the complexities associated with the planning and the design and the construction of the roadway. So, the more reasonable approach would be to hash out those specific deadlines through written agreement between the developer and the city, and that proposed language has been changed to reflect this. So, as I had mentioned, I would like to spend a few moments going over the proposed new height incentives. The first is the Flagler Drive seawall improvement. This requires the developer to contribute funds to the city's seawall improvement fund. The incentive height is based on the lineal footage of seawall improvement. As you can see, it increases incrementally by 50 feet up to a maximum of 500 feet, and the contribution to the fund must be made prior to the certificate of occupancy or the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. The second incentive is the Flagler Drive roadway improvement. This requires the developer to contribute funds to the city's Flagler Drive roadway improvement fund. The developer will receive additional height based on the lineal footage of roadway improvement. The eligible area for the proposed, for the incentive would be between 26th Street and Palm Beach Lake Boulevard, and contributions must be made prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy. In terms of outreach for the proposal to expand CMUD, it's actually been a couple years in the making. Formal discussions on the expansion began in 2022. Then, on May 8th, 2023, American Mission Work Session was held to provide staff with feedback and direction on the proposal to expand. As part of the process, staff also held four public workshops to inform the public on the proposal to expand. The public workshops are extensively summarized in the Community Engagement Report that was also included in the agenda packet. And from the public feedback, there is opposition from a number of residents from Flagler Point, located at the north end of the expansion area. Some of the concerns that have been raised by the residents include building height, increased traffic in the area, loss of privacy and sunlight, and impacts associated with construction activity. So, these objection letters, as well as the support letters that staff has received, have been included in the agenda packet. And since Agenda Review, staff has received three additional objection letters, which staff will submit to the clerk for the record. The Planning Board unanimously recommended approval of the expansion to the City Commission at its November 21st meeting last year. And to conclude staff's presentation, staff is recommending approval of Ordinance 5083-24 for the future land use map amendment, as staff has found that the amendment complies with the Florida statutes as well as the city's comprehensive plan. Approval of Ordinance 5084-24 for the rezoning. Staff has found that the proposed rezoning complies with the rezoning standards in Section 9432 of the Zoning and Land Development Regulations. And approval of Ordinance Number 5085-24 for the zoning code text amendment. Staff has found that the proposed text amendment complies with Section 9432, the amendment standards of our zoning code. And that concludes staff's presentation. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Ms. Louie. Go back a couple of slides where we talk about the softening of the hard deadline for the Northwood Road Extension.
Okay, let me just find that slide. Okay, so it's 10. Okay, that's not working. Hang on a second.
There we go.
Yes.
So, what assurance, or do we have assurance that before he gets the additional height?
So...
Either the road will be built or we have the money for the extension.
So, the money that is required is $6 million, and the Law Department is currently working with the attorneys to finalize the written agreement. So, it should come before you very soon, but at this time, they're still working on finalizing the specifics of the agreement.
But in layman's terms, we will have the money in hand before he has that additional height.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, please.
Rick Green, Development Services Director. As Linda mentioned, we're very close to an agreement. I quite honestly was hoping we could bring it for second reading. I've reached out to the attorney who's working on the agreement with Nancy Urcheck and asked him about the status. He has a draft with our comments and revisions. We're waiting for a response. In order for us to move forward, we need to get the agreement signed. We're going to do that. We also have to abandon a portion of Bethesda, which we intend to do. We have a meeting Thursday to discuss those details. Before Mr. Green can begin with his building to go from 111 feet to the 350 feet approved, he would need to submit the $6 million required. So, that money needs to be in hand before we go out to bid on the road construction.
Okay, very good.
We will know when the agreement is approved by the City Commission, if he's going to front the money and then move forward. He's going to need some time to prepare the architectural plan, so we still would like to get it in front of the commission as quickly as we can.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? President Warren, then Commissioner Ward, and then Commissioner Lambert. Okay.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm curious about the point that's been made about a compromise of their...
I'm sorry.
Can you speak to the issue about privacy being compromised as a result of taller buildings that are built next to Flagler Point?
Well, currently, the buildings are a lot shorter, but, you know, with a new building or a new development, they could potentially, or the residents feel like any type of new building would block their views based on setbacks.
Thank you. I believe that there was an issue about privacy being compromised because of the buildings.
Well, it'd be close, like the buildings would be close together, and, you know, it's not like open space between them. So, you know, being that the buildings are close together, they might feel inclined that they're losing their privacy based on that.
Is this different than other tall buildings that we have or other short buildings where we have that are in close proximity to one another where there's a compromise?
I don't think so. I don't think so. Yeah, I don't think so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ward?
I want to address the incentives, because I know there's been quite a few community meetings about what the community would like to see, and some, in particular, in Pleasant City. What was the decision based upon only to go for the seawall and North Flagler? Not that they're not important, but I just wanted to...
Well, we had some discussions with the Engineering Services Department as, because, you know, we all understand that there is sea level rise and it is close to Flagler, the district, and we felt like that was a priority in terms of, you know, finding a solution to move forward with improvements. We, you know, the funding might not be there, and basically, this would be a way to speed up the process. But we do have other improvements. It's not just the Flagler Drive seawall improvement or the Flagler Drive roadway improvement. We are considering, as part of this proposal, you know, increasing the building setbacks along Dixie Highway to provide for additional streetscaping, and that was considered an important element within the public meetings that we've had from the residents, that they would like to see Dixie Highway revitalize and, you know, with improved landscaping and beautification, that could potentially spur redevelopment or revitalization along that strip.
Mayor, follow-up?
Yes.
So, you're considering it. So, are we going to be presented with that information on second reading?
No, no, it's actually in the proposed text amendment to increase, to increase the building setbacks along Dixie. So, it is actually in the text language within the ordinance.
Commissioner, if I may add, the incentives that are currently in place for CMUD would be retained for CMUD South. So, for instance, workforce housing is one of our highest priorities. We offer a very generous incentive for those people, those developers who do workforce housing. The incentive to make improvements to Curry Park is also an incentive that could be used in the CMUD South. Olara, which was one of the two projects that Linda mentioned, to utilize their height incentive, they're donating 3.625 million towards the construction of Curry Park. So, that's how they're getting some of their height. So, those same standards that are in place today would continue with the CMUD South expansion. We're simply adding two new ones to that mix.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation and the work that staff has put into this. I know that we've long awaited some much-needed redevelopment in this area, and so I'm pleased to see this moving forward. Whenever looking at changes like this, two areas that I'm looking at are the environmental impacts and our infrastructure impacts. And you had a slide, I think it was before this one, that talked about if we were to approve this, that there was actually a reduction in the square footage and...
The future land use map amendment level of service analysis.
Thank you. If you don't mind just reviewing that again.
Yep, okay. So, six. Ah, this is not working today. Yeah, okay. Okay, so you're referring to this, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay, so basically, all future land use map amendments are required by the state to go through a level of service analysis. And as explained in the slide, it's to determine if there are sufficient capacities or public facilities servicing the area, if they have sufficient capacity to accommodate the future land use change. It's extremely critical if the impacts are greater. What we're proposing for CMUD South is spreading, like it's currently capped. The development within CMUD is currently capped with these numbers, so 4,063 residential units and 2.3 million square feet of commercial. So, basically, these caps are not expected to change. They will not change with the approval of the expansion area if the commission decides to approve it. So, based on the analysis that we've completed, we've looked at the comparison between the proposed CMUD expansion area, if the future land use of the area was to change, and comparing that to the current future land use of the area and how those numbers play out. And ultimately, when we look at the numbers between the current and proposed future land use of the expansion area, there is actually a reduction in residential units and a reduction in commercial square footage when we did that comparison. So, we were comparing the two based on, you know, the current and proposed future land use designation.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I'm looking forward to moving this forward as well. My question was going to be similar to Commissioner Lambert. I think one of the issues you mentioned the neighbors having was about the traffic, but based on this slide, what you're saying is that a reduction in units that could already, is already available for the area would actually mean less traffic, or at least the same amount of traffic that we already...
It would be the same based on the level of service analysis that was conducted when the district was first adopted. There was a level of service analysis, and we're not proposing to change that. It's also important to know that when individual projects do come in, formally get submitted, they also have to go through a traffic concurrency process. So, that's another layer. So, it will be evaluated at that time as well. But from a land use standpoint, which, you know, is conducted on more conservative levels, we're looking at the overall development potential. There aren't any issues regarding traffic. It's also located within a traffic exception area as well, being that it's located along Flagler. So, traffic concurrency based on the county standards is really not an issue within the proposed CMUD South area if it were to get adopted.
Okay, thank you.
Any other? Commissioner Ward?
Along the lines of some of the resident concerns, I hear this often as existing buildings and their foundation being compromised. What steps are we taking to ensure that neighboring buildings are, if they're impacted, that we're making sure that they're being taken care of?
Whenever there's a project approval, the city does require that the developer, as well as their construction team, provide a construction management plan, and that is to ensure that the impacts are reduced on adjacent properties as well as within the surrounding area in terms of traffic circulation, parking, and so forth. So, every project is required to submit that construction management plan when a project does get approved. And this is prior to the issuance of a building permit? Yes.
Any other questions? Commissioner Baduzy?
Just to follow up on Commissioner Ward's question. Is it construction itself, does construction itself cause a risk to the foundation of surrounding buildings? And if so, is, does that increase? Does the risk increase when height increases?
I'll try to address that. Typically, there's a structural analysis done when a new building comes in. Our building official happens to have proficiency. He's a structural engineer, so he has a proficiency in that. But typically, that's reviewed at the time of building permit submission, so we will make sure that when the foundation is set, and typically, the foundation is pulled, that permit is pulled separate and apart from the building, because it's a much lengthier process. But that'll all be done as part of the building permit review process. The other thing that we encourage developers to do, and most of them do that automatically, is that they will go to the adjoining properties and take pictures, videos, to look at the condition of those structures prior to them commencing. So, if there happens to be any damage during construction, they have a video, they have photos, they can see if, in fact, any damage that may be as a result of construction befalls a neighboring property. But there's a methodology that most developers go through that we certainly will review to eliminate any cause of concern for structural damage and integrity damage to a building.
Follow-up?
Yes.
So, if I understand you correctly, I mean, it sounds like there could always be a risk to surrounding properties with any kind of construction. It's not necessarily, you know, related to only construction of tall buildings. I mean, smaller buildings, I would think, could pose a risk as well. Any construction, am I understanding that correctly?
It could be any construction, absolutely. Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the dais? Okay, we have a number of cards. I'm going to call out four names at a time, and if you can start making your way toward the podium, I'm going to call out cards for 9.1, then we'll go to 9.2 and 9.3. So, item 9.1, Whitney Jean, John, Brian Seymour, Ron Collins, and Jacques Lacombe. Those four, if you can start making your way toward the podium, please. Whitney, John, Jean.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I am here to...
Just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Whitney Jean. I'm a resident of the north end, and I just wanted to speak in support of this project, especially, I am appreciative of the plans to revive and revitalize the Dixie Highway corridor, as well as, I'm sorry, I'm a little sick, as well as the reinforcements and improvements to the seawall along Flagler and the improvements to the road. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Seymour?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. My name is Brian Seymour with the law firm of Gunster on behalf of 1717 North Flagler Drive Venture, which, as I think everybody is quite aware, is part of the Related Group, and we have principals of the Related Group who are here with us tonight. Not surprising to anybody, this is obviously important to us. This is a step, to be clear. This is not approving a building. This is not a design. We don't get there until we get here. But, you know, this started with you all. It didn't start with us. It started with you all. It was a direction of the City Commission. We appreciate the time that staff has put into this. We've been at this for a long time. Ms. Louie laid out a whole host of discussions, community meetings, commission workshops. In addition, we also had meetings, numerous meetings in 2023 in March, April, June. We also then followed each of those with surveys to the community, asking for input and feedback, and those were the broadest community meetings. September 14th, we held another where we specifically mailed every member-owner of Flagler Point. We did hear that people don't live there, they're rentals, so they may not have gotten it. I can't answer that. I can't answer that question specifically, except that we sent something to everybody who owns within Flagler Point, had a meeting there in September of 2023. And then there were actually eight meetings in 2022 as well. There's been a lot of discussion about this through the course of time. I don't want to go through all of it with staff. There's a lot of incentives that are involved. Commissioner Lambert, you talked about some of the environmental issues. Well, that seawall and some of the things that relate to that, that's all about resiliency. We need to deal with that going forward. So those things are built into this, right? That's part of the incentives, so that it isn't the taxpayers of the city that are going to pay for most of those things that benefit the entire city, but the developers who are going to look at this, who will end up having to pay for those benefits to all, right? So that's part of the, it's on a, I hate to use the word partnership, because it is certainly not a public-private partnership, but a collaboration between the city and the development community. And certainly, as we do go develop plans, we will continue to work with our neighbors. We will continue to reach out. I've been doing this too long to tell you that I'm going to have everybody come in here and tell you how great we are. But the truth of the matter is, we will continue to work through that as we go through that process. So look, this is about the next stage in the development of this city and the growth of this city. You can't put your head in the sand and say things, people won't come if you don't build. And every time that gets tried, it goes very poorly. And so this is about everybody trying to work together as best as we can and to do our best, and we've done our best. As you see, we have had numerous meetings, and we've worked very hard to try to accommodate the benefits for the community and the city as a whole. We understand that there's still work to be done on the specific plans, and we look forward to doing that, and ask that you do approve this on first reading this evening. If there's questions, please let us know.
Thank you, your time is up, thank you. Ron Collins.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm here speaking on behalf of my daughter. My daughter lives in Flagler Point, and she'd be here herself to speak for herself, but she's ill. So she asked Dad to do it for her, and here I am. My daughter and so many of the residents of Flagler Point oppose and strongly oppose the three cases you're considering tonight as basically the first major steps in what will become an avalanche allowing the development of huge and major buildings on that site. Now, I am not, and my daughter is not, a no-grower. I'm all for growth. I like a lot of the large buildings and developments that are happening in this city. But every one of those projects, every development project is not necessarily good for the city. I practiced law doing this kind of work for a long time. You know that, Mr. Mayor. I've represented many developers, so I know what they do and how they do it, and it was usually okay in my mind. This one is not, and I think the staff, I know they worked hard on this, but I think they were a bit disingenuous with you when they conveyed to you the concerns of Flagler Point. You may not realize it, but the development that will go there if you approve this completely dramatically undermines the quality of life of the residents there. It totally puts in shadow all of their amenities, their swimming pool, their gathering places, it is all totally in shadow. The traffic will be dramatically increased. Flagler Point has entrances and exits on both Dixie Highway to the west and Flagler Drive. The plan, as I understand it before you, does not have that. And we were told by your staff today that the traffic is being reduced. Now, that is utter nonsense. What they're telling you is that if that area were built to the absolute maximum, it would generate this amount of traffic. But because they're going to build a little less than the maximum, it's generating this amount of new traffic, and therefore, there's less traffic. It's like saying, if you could build the Empire State Building there, it would be a lot of traffic. But we're only going to build half an Empire State Building, and therefore, there's a traffic reduction. Now, that is, to me, absolute nonsense. You heard from the staff about a lot of numbers and a lot of charts, and they did this exercise and that exercise, and they did what they're supposed to do. But I don't want you to give short shrift to the most important element of this, and it is a required consideration.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. All right. I'm going to call out four more names. Please start making your way toward the podium. Carol Mead, Francisco Gill, Fran Perchik, and Carol Sharmet. Each of you gets three minutes. We don't feel obligated to take all three minutes. Okay, Carol Mead.
Hello, my name is Carol Mead. I live at Flagler Point. We're here, once again, to take a look at the cumulative effect that Seamud South and each of the individual exceptions that you have allowed are going to have on Flagler Point, and there are more than 900 residents. Rick Green, you stated to us in 2021 that you would look at the impacts of each building before moving to approve the next one. Well, that is not what's happening here. Flagler Point is going to be in an urban canyon surrounded by 200 to 300-story high-rise buildings, as you can see by what I gave to you. We are now going to be surrounded on three sides, three sides. The effects on Flagler Point residents are insurmountable and perilous, perilous, from the structural integrity of a 20-plus-year-old building whose foundation and infrastructure will surely, surely be compromised to the 10 years of noise, dust, debris, traffic nuisance, and assured negative financial impacts that will bankrupt the investors and our building association. You say Flagler Point will go up in value. Well, yes, but not after, until construction is complete. And in the meantime, tenants are not renewing leases or they're asking for reductions, which they can legally do because of Florida Statute 83.56, which allows for constructive eviction of a Florida tenant and allowed to break their lease due to breach of quiet enjoyment. This equates to millions of dollars in losses and an increase in HOA fees and assessments for non-payment of fees and increased attorney collection fees for Flagler Point to the tune of between $800,000 and $2.7 million a year, and that's conservative based on a 30% loss. Flagler Point bylaws only allow for our building sale when 100% of our buyers buy in, because people are saying, oh, well, just get rezoned. We need 100% of 404 units to say yes. Flagler Point has already endured more than three power outages in some case of up to eight hours with loss of productivity and onsite management employees. More than 20% of our residents work at home, causing financial hardships for all of them. The recent outages of these projects are places like Olara and places that are more than 500 feet from us. They're not next to us. We've already had three major power outages due to construction. The disruption is surely going to displace our existing workforce employees. Many of them live in Flagler Point, and they are firefighters, et cetera. They're going to be displaced. The structural integrity issues are real. Nearby construction and vibration, you cannot assure the structural integrity of Flagler Point. You can say anything you like, but we know, we know that we are going to be compromised when there are three major construction issues happening around us.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Francisco Gill. Francisco Gill. Well, I'm just seeing if Mr. Gill is here, and then I'll go to, you let me do the meeting. Okay, you stay there, I got this. You going to speak? Well, they're all together. All right, so you want to speak on 9.2? You want to speak on 10? Okay, back to 9.1. Fran Perchik.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight to express my concerns about the proposed zoning changes. My name is Fran Perchik, and I live on North Flagler Drive. I'm probably a familiar face by now. I've spoken several times at city meetings to encourage the city, landowners, and residents to work together to protect the Lake Worth Lagoon. Just a reminder that my background is environmental science and conservation biology, and although I work for a renowned environmental organization, I am not speaking on their behalf tonight. I recommend the zoning change be declined since increased building heights would not only be incompatible with the rest of the neighborhood to the south, but expansive and tall buildings will place the surrounding community and Lake Worth Lagoon in shadow for a great portion of each day. The lack of direct sunlight will impact our community and the sensitive ecosystems that need sunlight to survive. That's the fish, the birds, the many different species of endangered sea turtles, manatees, sharks, rays, et cetera. We've talked about the importance of seagrass in the lagoon previously. It's critical to marine life as both a food source and a habitat. And like other plants, it needs sunlight to live. So I and my neighbors are stressing the need for a comprehensive, hard look to put the health of the lagoon first. The future of the lagoon cannot be addressed after a zoning decision has been made or after buildings and docks that are approved are constructed. So we can't expect the value and the beauty and the wildlife of the lagoon, its economic benefits to our surrounding city. We can't expect that to continue if we don't support the lagoon. And so we're not just talking about one building casting shadows, which still is a negative impact. We're talking about the cumulative effect of many huge projects that will be constructed along North Flagler Drive. The shadows from the projects and the in-water infrastructure from some of the projects will cause harm to the lagoon, and that is in violation and noncompliance with standard number six, which requires no adverse impacts to the natural environment. So we're here to rely on your stewardship and your leadership, and we ask that you pause for a moment, engage with environmental experts, use specific data to analyze the potential impacts before you vote tonight. We've got to look at the area as a whole, rather than as all of these one-off projects. That type of holistic review will help protect the lagoon when new zoning, new buildings, new docks and marinas are proposed. We're requesting that all environmental due diligence be completed with a more comprehensive environmental review before making a decision of this kind of permanence and magnitude. You have incredible expertise sitting up here. You've got incredible expertise in the city. You've got the emergency resource, excuse me, the Environmental Resources Management Team at Palm Beach County. You've got the Florida Water Management District.
Thank you very much, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
All right. More names. Carol Sharmet, Nancy Saris, Joanna Elm. Carol Sharmet. Is she here? Oh, she says she doesn't wish to speak, so I'll read those later. Okay, Nancy, is Nancy here?
Good evening, Commissioner, and all of the mayor. Good evening, Mayor, and the staff. First, let me say, I understand I'm a businesswoman, I understand...
Make your name for the record, please.
Oh, Nancy Saris, 1801 North Flagler Drive. I own two units there, first bought in 2005. Love it there, and I've got a lot of our neighbors here with us tonight. We are very concerned, and I know you're, I know I understand the tax revenue. I understand all the things you're looking for. I too appreciate development, but I'm very concerned about the lack of sunshine, the lack of how we're going to have to live in that neighborhood. I agree, we need to do work there, but I just hope that you will consider the impact. Back in 2021, Rick Green stated at several of the meetings, I was at some of them in person, where he said that we will start with one project first, which was Olara, okay? Let's see the impact, was what he promised to us. Now, I know promises can be superseded by cash, I get that. But I'm really concerned about the fact that we have one project after another without any consideration of the assessment of what the impact actually is and how things work going forward. I ask that you please consider that promise that was given to us. Please consider it as if you live there, and your family live there, and your little dog live there. I have asthma, okay, and terrible allergies. I am dreading this. I don't want to be forced to move, along with several of my neighbors. We're all over 60. We don't want to be forced to move because we can't breathe, we can't drive, and we have no sun. As you can see, I like the sun. And I am going to be absolutely devastated, along with the lagoon lovers, that we are going to damage our neighborhood permanently. So please consider other options, and at least consider a hold at this time. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, thank you so much for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Joanna Elm. Joanna Elm. Okay, there we go.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Joanna Elm. I've been a unit owner at Flagler Point for approximately 13 years, and I oppose this Seamud South expansion. I think you know that municipalities are obligated to protect the health, safety, and welfare of their residents, not just to bolster their tax revenues. What you're doing on this stretch of North Flagler is the very opposite of protecting health, safety, and welfare. If you've looked at the maps that the city has presented, you all know that we are now facing the possibility of having 306-foot buildings going up on either side of us, at the back of us on North Dixie, on Dixie Highway, with the two 16-foot towers, a block away at Olara, and across from us on the intracoastal where you approved the Olara Marina. There's a big crane there right now. I don't know, last time I was here, I asked you to take a stroll down that stretch of North Flagler to take, I think Commissioner Ward said she biked down there. And can you imagine living in the middle of all? We're going to be in the middle of a construction site, and if they all start together, that's going to be horrendous. If they space out the building, the individual buildings, we're going to be in the middle of a construction site for maybe a decade. Now, if you can imagine what the noise, what the air pollution, what the structural damage too, because you can't believe surely that there won't be any structural damage from construction surrounding us. Now, Mr. Mayor, and you Commissioners, on May the 8th, you directed the city to go ahead with this Seamud South expansion. You say in your, in the agenda here, that no major issues were raised. No, they weren't raised, but I think a couple of you, maybe you, Commissioner Fox or Lambert, said, hey, how about Flagler Point? Flagler Point is right there in the middle. And I think Commissioner Ward said, oh yeah, Flagler Point, whatever. You threw us under the bus on May the 8th. Now is your chance to drag us out from under it. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. All right, I have several cards here from people who did not want to speak on item 9.1. I'll just read their comments. Kevin Naylor, I disagree with the development. I have concerns with the structural integrity. Such development would cause to our building of 900 residents. Eugenia Young, I oppose great changes to our complex loss of sun in our courtyard, and my view. Athena Karimaris, I would like to know how close to the street the plan calls for. George Karimaris, is the proposed drawing variance inclusive? Camille Klein, I do not wish for Rich Carlton to go up next to 1801 North Flagler. George Saris, I am vehemently against more construction until we understand impact of Olara and now the temple slash related. And Carol Sharmet, West Palm Beach must limit the size of the proposed Olara to be in line with Flagler Point, the Slade, and other buildings. Okay, so those are the ones that didn't want to speak on 9.1. We do have some cards from people who want to speak on 9.2. Mark Barbian and Michelle Tomlinson, if you could approach, please.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners, or good afternoon, evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The city is presenting that this proposal conforms to our zoning and land development standards, when in fact, it does not. This vote is about standards, and if it is, you must vote no. Kimberly, section 94-209 of the code requires that no block within the mixed-use district can be larger than 600 feet. The city understands this is an accessibility issue, but I guess they forgot to measure. I purchased the standard measuring device, checked its accuracy, and measured a block three times. The first block in the Seamud South expansion area on Flagler Drive between Pine Street and North... and North Lakeside Court is 655 feet. In case you're curious, section 78-491 of the West Palm Beach ordinances defines a block as measured from one city street to the other. The attached pictures show that this dock is, this block is documented at 655 feet and is too large to meet the standard. Secondly, the justification that this is a continuation of an existing land use pattern and should be approved because of its proximity to downtown, well, just isn't accurate. Travel with me. South on Steamwood, there's a four-story hospital, Providencia Park, a single-family neighborhood, a four-story condominium, and a the Rosarian Academy. We've traveled just more than a half a mile, and there is nothing there that would justify a 306-foot tower as an expansion of an existing land use pattern. Closer to home, the Core One proposal is three times taller than Flagler Point, six times taller than its western neighbor, 50% taller than either of the two condo buildings to the south. This proposal in no way is consistent with the land use pattern and does not meet standard. Any proposal that creates an urban or street canyon is bad. These canyons are bad city planning, and they're bad for residents. They're like two airplane wings in the development that accelerate the prevailing winds, and they create an even more dangerous vortex over Flagler Point when the wind is perpendicular. A study in 2021 shows that environmental concerns because of canyon air pollution causing adverse health impacts on pedestrians, drivers, and residents. In 2008, a NIH study warned, "Street canyons can exacerbate the health and impact of traffic pollutants." This is definitely a loss of service. Additionally, it doesn't take an engineer to understand that a 306-foot skyscraper five feet from our property line will completely shade the south wing of Flagler Point, our common amenity areas, and the north wing of our building. Not to mention the nine-story building west will never see sun until midday. On the environment, we approved all of these buildings on a one-off basis, never considering the cumulative impact of the environment. While Kathleen, you voiced that concern in previous meetings, it's your turf, it's your watch. We now have seven towers approved with 300 feet or more, all within a half a mile. We need this comprehensive study. This proposal does not meet standard. I'd ask that you vote no.
Thank you very much. Michelle Tomlinson.
Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Michelle Tomlinson. I'm an owner at Flagler Point. I'm actually also a lawyer who used to represent developers, including Ritz Carlton. So it's funny that now I'm on the other side of things, and I have a different point of view. However, Linda mentioned earlier, when I think Commissioner Warren, you asked about privacy, she said she doesn't think that there is any other, anything different than downtown. And when you think about five feet away from somebody's balcony, there's definitely going to be a privacy concern. There's definitely going to be shadow concerns. Judge Cunningham spoke about the fact that we should all do something every day to improve someone's life. You should do something every day to improve your constituents' life, and frankly, this would not improve the lives of Flagler Point residents for many reasons, as many people have spoken about before. Another point was made saying that the maximum density and the height, those sorts of things, they comply with statutes and rezoning standards, that sort of thing. Even if they comply, it doesn't mean it's the right thing to do. It doesn't mean it's the ethical thing to do or the moral thing to do. Judge Cunningham also mentioned that West Palm Beach is a beautiful place for all of us to live. It would no longer be a beautiful place to live for the residents at Flagler Point. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a card from Jane Gowan. She didn't want to speak, but she did want these remarks read into the record. The community of Flagler Point will not be able to enjoy their pool, barbecue, and hot tub sitting area without sunny during winter months with a 300-foot structure robbing us of the sun. For us, it won't be sunny Florida anymore. Okay, that's her comments. All right, I do have a card on 9.3, which is all part of the same discussion, from Charles Milk. Charles Milk?
Mills.
Mills, okay, I'm sorry.
No problem.
All right, Charles Mills from Flagler Point. Hello, everybody. A couple of things here. I want to back up one, if it's okay. Just observe, my understanding is Flagler Point is not part of Seamud South, not part of Seamud North. It's an individual in between the two. The wording is confusing when I read that, so I would recommend looking at that. If Flagler Point's not to be included, we are south of Pine Street. This is insinuating that we're part of this. I don't think that's true. Moving on to this, I think the extra incentives should be rejected. There's already incentives now for increased height to get to the height that they want. They're going to want to do the wall in Flagler Point. I get that. We all would want that. But they are going to want that more than, say, us on this, so we're going to have a list of five or six. Who picks those? Who chooses that? How much are they? It's in their best interest to take what we have now with the incentives, and if they want to contribute more to help with that, I'd hit them up for that. It's a good, good business opportunity. Thirdly, they said there was an impact study done. I'd like to know where I could see that. I'm curious about what that is. And the last one is, they're putting two big towers on Flagler Point. Is there an impact study of both of those going up to Flagler Point? I've heard one, I've heard another. What about both of them? I'd like to hear what that would be too. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, those are all the cards. Any questions, comments, Commissioner Ward, and then President Warren and Commissioner Fox?
I have a few. So you just want me to do one, or do you want me to go through all of them?
Excuse me?
I said I have a few. Do you want me to like go continue?
Why don't you go through one? Let me make the rounds, and then we'll come back around.
I was wondering if staff wanted to talk about the responses to the impact studies setbacks. I have a lot of questions. And the recent, actually, no, no, just the impact studies, and then what setbacks are actually going to be permitted in the buildings, any proposed buildings on the sides.
So the, the impact study is actually the level of service analysis that was completed. And again, like this is required as part of all future land use map amendment applications. It's required by the state. So the state does require that each land use amendment has to be analyzed in terms of its impact regarding the amount of development that can happen. And so with the proposed Seamud South expansion, those caps aren't going to be changed. That level of service analysis was completed when those caps were first established back in 2002. So based on that analysis and the fact that the, the caps aren't expected to change with the expansion area, there wouldn't be any impact with the expansion because it's being spread out as opposed to creating more issues with the level of service.
Do you have a follow-up on that question?
So the height change, does it necessarily impact the study?
No, I mean, the caps are all based for the entire district, so it doesn't matter what the height is. The densities, the density has a cap, the amount of commercial square footage has a cap, the height doesn't play a factor. It's for the entire district that these caps are applied to, not those, not the individual parcels or projects.
All right, President Warren.
Mayor, I have a point of clarification for the previous question, and then a simple question, I believe. So the impact studies, and does that include the environmental impact?
This is, just keep in mind that this is a redevelopment area, so it was previously developed in terms of how we've looked at it, in terms of the standards. It's based on, you know, I can pull up the standards for you.
And would the height be relevant? Would, would that change anything?
No, no. Again, the caps are the same. I mean, if, if this is approved, they would be restricted to the height limitations that, under the new regulations. So in terms of impact on ecological water, that is outside of our district. So that would be the South Florida Water Management District that would regulate that if there were any significant impacts.
Thank you. And you, you stated, or it states here that this was recommended by the planning board. Do you know what the vote was?
Yes, it was 6-0.
6-0 in favor of?
It was a unanimous approval.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. I do want to say thank you to everyone who came out tonight. I appreciate hearing from you. I live in the square, and I am constantly living in the middle of construction. I mean, I personally am excited for the future, and so to me, pain is progress. But I currently, my kitchen window, I look out to what used to be Macy's. It's probably a few feet from me, and I have never had a power outage once in the, I don't know, two years that related, it's been building this. So I am concerned when I hear those kinds of things. I'm wondering if staff can speak to that. I mean, I am in favor of this moving forward tonight. I'm not in favor of the things that are disrupting, the things that can be prevented that are disrupting people's current lives, you know, such as power outages. I feel like that may have something to do with the current construction that's going on or the way that they're handling it. I just want to go on record as saying that because it's the first I've heard of eight hours of power outages. I agree, I work from home, and that would be completely disruptive to my job. So, you know, moving forward, well, for the current situation with the power outages, I want to see how, what we can do to talk to the developers about making sure that that does not continue. But also going forward, I want to see what kind of plans can we have in place to make sure that understandably, there's going to be construction issues. It might be a little, you know, noisy from the construction, things like that, but there, we can't, you know, move forward and think that it's okay for people's lives to be disrupted in ways that we can prevent or we can, you know, ensure in some way that the developers know that that's not going to be acceptable.
So with all projects, new projects that have been coming in that are located within the district, we have encouraged the developer to reach out to the residents of Flagler Point as well as the area to determine what their concerns are. And we always encourage the developer to work with the residents in the area, especially if there are any concerns, and what those concerns are, identifying them, and to see if there's any solutions to those issues. So we do encourage that whenever an application does come in. With regards to power outages, that is something that can be brought up as a concern, but this typically does get looked at during construction management. So, you know, as mentioned in my, you know, during the question period, the developer is required to submit a construction management plan, and, you know, that can obviously be raised as a concern to, to, you know, see if there's any solutions to try to prevent that in the future.
All right, Commissioner Ward, I know you had some follow-up questions.
Thank you. And just to follow up on that, I, I hope, because that was one of my questions about power outages, I hope that somebody from staff or administration is going to look into that as to what the cause was because, you know, I live close to an existing development, Icon Marina, and I've never experienced a powder, a power outage. And I did experience issues and frustrations with construction. Now I have a beautiful building that's adding a lot of different residents and a lot of eyesight and potential for betterment in the community. So, but I do want that to be checked out by some, someone from administration.
Mayor, by May.
Yes.
We'll, we'll go ahead and check that. I have not heard of any power outages in that area related to any construction, but we will go ahead and check with FPNL to see if there was an outage that was directly related to construction and get back with you.
Okay. And as it relates to frustrations and interference when it comes to the foundation, again, I hear it a lot. So just put us through a scenario of what it looks like when we're coming in and some developer is proposing a building, and there are existing older buildings next door. Walk us through what happens, and if there's damage to those buildings, in what event, who holds them accountable? How does that operate? And, and hopefully in a detailed way that the residents and myself can understand.
Again, Rick Green, Development Services Director. Again, I'm not an expert in high-rise construction, but typically what would happen, and not to put Mr. Seymour on the spot, but maybe somebody on the construction end can answer. But typically what would happen is that they would, any, any adjoining property, typically a developer would go into that property, they would take video, they would take pictures, the individual units, the inside, the outside. They would have a plan and make a determination of the impacts of primarily building the structural foundation for that high-rise structure. And then if there were any claims by a resident, in this case Flagler Point, they would bring that to the attention of the developer, and that's an issue that would have to be resolved between the developer and the resident. We certainly, as part of the building permit review, would look at the structural plans and make sure everything was done appropriately and consistent with the Florida Building Code. But at the end of the day, it's going to be the developer's responsibility to make sure that they do not impact any of the adjoining property owners.
Be in an indemnity and hold harmless, an agreement between developer and adjacent residents. I mean, we, we say we're going to do something, but how do we follow up to make sure that those things are upheld?
Again, we can, when the project comes in, we certainly can make that a condition of approval, that these steps be taken. We can flush out the specific language with our building official. And then if this moves forward with first and second reading, then a new development, whether it's in the transition district or the Ritz Carlton as part of the Core One district, would have to go for a site plan review with the planning board. And certainly, we can make it a condition. We've encouraged this developer in particular to have meetings with the Flagler Point residents, and I've had numerous meetings with the Flagler Point residents, many of whom who have spoken tonight, and I've asked them to share with the developer and share with the city any and all concerns you have. So if and when a project does come in, we know specifically what those issues are. There was mention of the incentives as well. There's, you know, now probably close to 10 incentives that could be utilized by a developer. I've encouraged the residents of Flagler Point to go through that list of incentives and identify to the developer which ones are most important to them. So when they're seeking that additional height, they can say, well, we want you to do A, B, or C as opposed to D, E, and F. So we're trying to continue that line of communication, and it seems to be ongoing, and we're having the same issue with the Temple Israel site to the north, and those meetings and discussions are ongoing.
Okay. Don't get yet, because I have another one.
All right, you have another question.
Yeah. Can you name another development that went up next to an older building and had negative impacts within our city?
Negative impacts? I, I know that when, again, not picking on Related Group, but when Icon Marina was being built, I was getting a call from a resident every two or three weeks about an issue that was happening, whether it was, in, in this particular case, a lot of it was trucks parking in front of this person's home. When I contacted the onsite construction manager and the gentleman who worked for Related Group, he was extremely responsive in addressing that complaint whenever it came up. Linda mentioned that the construction management plan, there's also a requirement that a developer provide a MOT plan, a maintenance of traffic. How are the trucks going to get to the site? How are they going to leave the site? We do that again for every project. So in this particular case, sometimes the truck drivers that were bringing material to the site weren't following that MOT, but it, it got corrected. But in terms of physical damage to a building, I can't remember. When one Flagler was going up, I know we got a complaint about some of the lighting. There's an opportunity to request after-hours construction, particularly if you're pouring concrete. One of the lights was improperly deflecting onto the, the plaza building. Again, we brought that to the, the contractor's attention, and it was corrected within a day. So we try to be responsive as best we can, but I, I can't think of a, one off the top of my head where there was substantial damage done to a building as a result of construction.
But essentially, building, a tall building next to an older, smaller building is not abnormal in the city of West Palm Beach or in Palm Beach County in general.
It happens all the time.
Okay. Does, do you guys want to provide any comment about the, the comment from one of the residents related to 94-209?
I didn't catch the end of that, Commissioner.
94-209, the standards for blocks, the maximum length of a block shall be 600 feet?
We'll, we'll have to look at that and see.
Any other questions, Commissioner? She said she had a?
I did. I have one more, sorry.
All right.
And, and then what's the timeframe? I, I heard 10, 10 years a couple times on construction. Given O'Lara, the temple site, potential constructions, obviously the ones that we already know of that are being dealt with, we can't foresee the future, what would that normal timeline look like?
I would suspect probably a minimum of 20 years is what you're looking at. And, and, I'm, I'm sorry, you're talking about build-out of Seamud or?
No, the three, the three projects that we've heard about.
A project of that magnitude generally would take about a year and a half to two years. Again, we don't know the timing of when each one are coming in. We know, of course, that O'Lara is under construction now, Temple Israel is right behind it. We know, of course, that Alara is under construction now, Temple Israel is right behind it. So we don't know. But if I can, Mayor, I want to maybe try to clarify some of the concerns about the traffic. So if you label Seamud, and I'm Spanish, so I'm going to use my hands, if you label Seamud Parcel A and the Seamud Expansion is Parcel B, when you're looking at traffic, you're simply adding A plus B, you get your total traffic. So what Linda was, was discussing earlier is that what we're doing is that you've got the development from Seamud, you've got the development from Seamud, Seamud South, but we're taking solely the cap of development from A and extending it into B. So you're not adding A plus B, you're taking this development, incorporating it into the maximum that's already established for A. That's why we're saying that total development should be reduced as a result of that.
Okay. Commissioner Baduzi.
Thank you, Mayor. And just going back briefly, just one question with regard to Commissioner Ward's line of questioning on, on damage that's possible to be caused to surrounding buildings. Is there any requirement either in, in state building codes or is there some standard when it comes to, to building high-rises or buildings like this for the developer to monitor or have equipment that monitors ground vibration?
Commissioner, I'm not a building expert. I certainly can look into that and get back to you before second reading. I don't know if there is a specific requirement as, in terms of the Florida Building Code. But typically, when you are building a building, all of your impacts are, are to be confined to your site. They're not allowed to spill over into adjacent properties.
Okay. I think maybe then in the past, I've heard of ground monitoring equipment being used, but maybe it was not by the developer, maybe it was by owners of adjacent properties that, that hired companies to monitor.
Well, I, I will say that we have had developments in the past where we have expressed the, developers and neighbors have expressed a concern and there were sensors that were placed on the surrounding property. So if the vibratory compaction, for instance, got too great, that sensor would be triggered and we would know that you could be potentially impacting the adjacent property to the, to the south or to either side, actually. So when and if a development comes in, and again, it goes through the approval process, in this case through the planning board, we certainly, given the concerns that we've been hearing from the residents, we can include additional conditions that would better protect and ensure safety of not only the building, but the residents on either side.
Thank you.
President Ward.
There's been a lot that's happened in Seamud since I've been on the desk, but I do believe that these incentives were created because we wanted to stimulate development. And there were several meetings that were held because the focus and the goal was to be able to bring in projects that would enhance the community and enhance the, the business community in, in area where there had been no construction for a very long period of time. Is that correct?
Exactly correct. If you remember, when we did the Seamud Regulations back in 2014, we went an entire decade and nothing was built within Seamud with the exception of Neil Kozakoff's project. So the whole point, and, and as we continued to have workshops, and in the case of Seamud to the north, you know, Jeff Green bought half of that property and he, he and other developers indicated that the numbers just weren't there, that it couldn't work, given the limited height of 15 stories that existed under the 2014 regulations. When we made the change with the incentives, because we wanted to get something back for our residents, so we said, we'll give you a base height, we'll give you more, but you've got to give us something back, whether it's workforce housing improvements to Curry Park, in the case of Seamud South, either the Seawall or Flagler Drive, along with the other incentives. The whole point was an effort to try to encourage redevelopment and now we're finally seeing it.
Thank you. And I would support this for that reason because this is the results that we were looking for when we created those incentives. It was actually to see this type of, these types of projects come forward, this type of stimulation of the community, this type of moving forward of our community. So unfortunately, even though I am sensitive to what the residents are saying, I have to also consider that I, I can't say no to the end result that we were looking for because there are people that say, I don't want it next to my development. I think that the end goal is to see progress. And for that reason, I would support this.
Any other, our Commissioner Ward.
Just one more.
Any other you want.
A lot of the discussion about environmental impacts does go back to our prior discussions. And I, and I did say, you know, our, our lagoon isn't as, as great as it could be right now. So what are we doing, staff, to either engage environmental scientists, look into how we can make sure that that lagoon is a pride point and continuously a pride point because people come here because of the water.
Commissioner, can we keep it at least on the building? And now, now you're asking for us to talk about what we're doing to save the lagoon?
No, I'm talking about the fact that there's going to be construction. Construction could potentially lead to environmental impacts in our waterways and are we making any plans outside of the downtown area to look at the quality of our water, given the fact that we will be having a lot of construction in this area?
Mayor, I can, I can address that at a very high level, but, you know, the city is looking at numerous ways to improve the quality of the lagoon. We work with the South Florida Water Management District regarding limiting discharges from Lake Okeechobee into the lagoon. When projects happen, for example, there's a city-initiated project that is a flood prevention project, a tidal valve project and, and stormwater project. Part of that process is working with South Florida Water Management on any impacts on runoff to the lagoon. So it really is, a lot of it's a project-by-project basis. We don't control lagoon, obviously. We have to rely on other agencies, but as projects happen and as opportunities come along, we work with the South Florida Water Management District and the state on improving the water quality.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. It sounds like there is support for this moving forward, but that we do hear the concerns of the residents. Can you talk a little bit about, should this pass? I know there's a second reading, but what are the next steps with the projects that could move forward here?
Well, again, as you heard earlier today, there have been ongoing discussions, not only with staff, but with the developer. We will continue to encourage the developer to have those discussions, just like we, we've done with Temple Israel, who's a little bit further ahead. Linda and I have sat in meetings at, at Temple Israel to hear discussions between developers and residents and we will continue to do so. If the Seamud Expansion gets approved, then the next step would be a development, would file an application to the city. It would go through our Plans and Plats Review Committee and then it would go to the planning board. If you remember, when we adopted the Seamud Regulations, this commission vested the power of final approval within Seamud to the planning board. So they would have the ultimate say and we'd have a public hearing at the planning board.
Commissioner Ward.
If there are no other questions, I'm ready to make a motion.
Any other questions? All right, proceed with the motion.
All right. And I do want to say, I am a resident in this area. I do drive by it, I walk by it, I bike by it. And I think that we are, in this project, pushing forward health, safety, and welfare and making this area a better place. And I could go into a lot of the negative commentary that I get existing in District One, but I'm not going to. And I, I don't speak and say whatever in meetings, so I don't know who heard that, but maybe I blacked out. You can send me the video of when I said that. But I think I've talked enough tonight. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 5083-24, changing the future land use designation of 17.35 plus or minus acres of the area generally bounded by the parcel south of Pine Street to the north, 14th Street to the south, North Flagler Drive to the east, and North Dixie Highway to the west, from a multifamily and commercial future land use designation to a mixed-use future land use designation. This motion is based on the application submitted, the staff report, factual testimony, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the request complies with the provisions of Chapter 163 Florida statutes and the comprehensive, city's comprehensive plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded at discussion. Hearing non, Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 5083-24, in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, by changing the future land use designation of the area generally bound by the parcel south of Pine Street to the north, 14th Street to the south, North Flagler Drive to the east, and North Dixie Highway to the west, consisting of 17.35 acres, from multifamily to commercial to mixed-use, no, from multifamily and commercial to mixed-use, declaring the proposed amendment to the future land use map amendment to be consistent with all other elements of the comprehensive plan of the city, providing for an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Commissioner Ward.
Mayor, I move approval of ordinance number 5084-23, rezoning certain parcels totaling 10.11 plus or minus acres within the area generally bounded by the parcel south of Pine Street to the north, 14th Street to the south, North Flagler Drive to the east, and North Dixie Highway to the west, from professional office residential and general commercial into Curry Mixed Use District Core One, Subdistrict and Curry Mixed Use District Transition Subdistrict. This motion is based upon the application submitted, the staff report, factual testimony, the recommendation of the planning board, along with the findings that the rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan and complies with the rezoning standards of Section 94-23 of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded at discussion. Hearing non, Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 5084-24, in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the zoning map of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, by rezoning certain parcels within an area generally bound by the parcel south of Pine Street to the north, 14th Street to the south, North Flagler Drive to the east, and North Dixie Highway to the west, consisting of 10.11 acres from professional office residential and general commercial to Curry Mixed Use District Core One Subdistrict and Curry Mixed Use District Transition Subdistrict, declaring this zoning map amendment to be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city, providing a conflicts clause, providing for an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Commissioner Ward.
Mayor, I move approval of ordinance number 5085-24, amending the text of Chapter 94 Zoning and Land Development Regulations, Article VII, Special Districts, Section 94-215, Curry Mixed Use District of the city's code of ordinances, to expand the boundaries of the Curry Mixed Use District and to provide for additional building height incentives within the district.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded at discussion. Hearing non, Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 5085-24, in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the code of ordinances of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, at Chapter 94 Zoning and Land Development Regulations, Article VII, Special Districts, Section 94-215, Curry Mixed Use District, to expand the boundaries and to provide for additional building height incentives within the Curry Mixed Use District, declaring this amendment to be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city, providing a conflicts clause, a codification clause, and a severability clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, we're now going to move into our quasi-judicial portion of the meeting. Commissioners, I need you to make your disclosures, please. Commissioner Fox, are you ready?
Mayor, I can go.
Yes. You're ready? Commissioner Ward's ready. Okay.
As to item 10.1, I have not had expertise communications, have not received written communications, have not conducted an investigation, have not made a site visit, have not received expert opinions. As to item 10.2, I have had expertise communications with the representative of applicant, I have received written communications in the form of emails from residents, I have not conducted an investigation, have not made a site visit, have not received expert opinions. As to item 10.3, I have had expertise communications with representative of the applicant, I have not received written communications, have not conducted an investigation, have not made a site visit, have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made a part of the record.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. As to item 10.1...
Hold on. If, if you, if you are leaving, could you leave quietly, please, and let's close that door because we get a lot of noise from there. Can any officers help me out here? What, what are the officers that we're using back there? Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. As to item 10.1, I have had expertise communications. I, with the applicant, I have not received any written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. As to item 10.2, I have had expertise communications with the applicant and residents, I have received written communication from the residents, I have not conducted an investigation, I have made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. As to item 10.3, I have not had expertise communications, not received written communications, not conducted an investigation, not made a site visit, and have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. President Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. As to item 10.1, I have, I have had expertise communications with the representatives of the developer, I have not received written communications, not conducted an investigation, not made a site visit, not received expert opinions. As to matter 10.2, I have had expertise communication with the representative of the developer, I have received expertise communications with the developer, I have received written communications from the community, I have not conducted an investigation, I have made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. As to item 10.3, I have had expertise communications with the representatives of the developer, I have not received written communications and not conducted an investigation, not made a site visit, not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Fox.
As to items 10.1 and 10.2, I have had expertise communications with representatives of the applicant, I have received written communications from residents, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. As to item 10.3, I have not had expertise communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Baduzi.
As to items 10.1 and 10.3, I have not had expertise communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, nor have I received any expert opinions. As to item 10.2, I have had expertise communications with the representative of the applicant, I have received written communications from residents, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, nor have I received any expert opinions. I ask that these, request that these disclosures and all written communications be made a part of the record.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, can you swear in all witnesses for items 10.1 through 10.3?
Would everyone wishing to speak on items 10.1 through 10.3, please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you are about to gives, if, give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Item 10.1, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number 5080-24, a request by Heather Danforth on behalf of Alexander Milan, owner of Mercer Park Homes LLC, for rezoning to change the existing zoning designation of 18 parcels along the north and south side of Alpha Street from multifamily low-density residential MF14 to multifamily high-density residential MF32.
Hi, as Valentina Burglia, planner with the City of West Palm Beach, there have been no changes since the first reading of the rezoning.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for staff? Does the applicant care to speak?
Hi, Heather Danforth, Integrated Perspectives. We have no, we have no further information since first, first reading.
Okay. Very good. Any questions for the applicant? All right, we do have one card. Rose Gekas, I apologize if I mispronounced that. Is she here? Rose? Rosie?
All right. It's for the...
Which one did you want to speak on, ma'am?
10-1. 10-1, all right.
This is 10-1. You want to speak on 10-2?
10-2.
10-2, okay, very good. We'll hold that. So there are no speakers on this one? Any questions, commissioners? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 5080-24. The motion is based upon the factual testimony presented, the application submitted, the staff report, and the findings that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and meets all standards provided in Section 94-32 of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
Second.
Very good. It's been moved and seconded at discussion. Hearing non, Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 5080-24, in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the zoning map of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, by rezoning 18 parcels located on the north and south side of Alpha Street, east of Mercer Avenue, and west of Wilkins Avenue, and comprised of 3.84 acres, from multifamily low-density to multifamily high-density... Declaring this zoning map amendment to be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city, revising the zoning map of the city accordingly, providing for an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign. Hearing in opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item ten point two, public hearing and first reading of ordinance number 5086-24 regarding a future land use map amendment to change the future land use designation of approximately six point five-one acres located eighty-one-eleven South Dixie Highway from multifamily MF to commercial East CE, and public hearing and first reading of ordinance number 5087-24 regarding a rezoning to change zoning designation of approximately six point five-one acres located eighty-one-eleven South Dixie Highway from residential planned development, RPD, to general commercial, GC.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners, City Staff. My name is Patrick Koenig, and on behalf of the Flagler Woodfield Development Team, I just wanted to express our gratitude. The city staff has been incredible. This has been a long thirty-month journey. We've done our best to try to reach out and have community engagement. I think we've successfully completed that, and I will pledge to you that if we are successful in getting your approval tonight, that we will stay focused and diligent, and we'll bring this project to completion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, Harvey Oyer of Shutt and Bone, on behalf of the applicant. Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, we are delighted to be here this evening, as Patrick just stated, because we are getting one step closer to finally redeveloping the eighty-one-eleven South Dixie Highway site. It has been a long time coming, long time vacant, long time off the tax rolls, and it is now going to serve our community. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is you have jurisdiction over a comp plan amendment and a rezoning. So we are not hearing the site plan tonight. You will hear the site plan at the second reading, should we be successful tonight, and the first reading. So it's not the site plan, though I'm going to share some imagery with you. We're delighted to answer questions. We have the entire professional team here, but technically, the vote on the site plan does not occur until the second reading. With that, you know the development team because you unanimously selected them. It is the Flagler Realty and Development Team, and their partnership with Woodfield Development, both well-known quantities in our community. Again, after ten applications, narrowed to six, narrowed to three, you unanimously chose this team to develop your property. These are some of their representative projects. I know you're familiar with them. I'd have to devote an entire slide presentation to get all the Flagler Realty and Development projects in our community into this PowerPoint deck you're very familiar with. Two very successful multifamily projects that Woodfield has in our community. One is on your old City Hall site, the Old Rese, and the other is Anya at three forty-five Banyan. So a well-petredgried development team, well-known in this community, well-known professional team. Let's talk about the site. You know it well. It's six and a half acres at the front entrance to our city, at the south end on the C fifty-one canal. It is bounded by the park, your golf course to the west, Palm Coast Plaza to the north, C fifty-one canal to the south, Dixie Highway to the east. This is the current condition of the site, which is vacant, and as you know, it has been for some time, not on the tax rolls, not being productive for our community. So I'm not going to give you the entire site development history because that would be over a century old. As you know, Dixie Highway is the oldest street in South Florida, so there has been activity for over a century, but going back about thirty years, this gives you a chronology of what has occurred there. I think the salient part for tonight is, for most of its history, from the beginning of time, until two thousand and five, it was commercial. And you can see in the lower left-hand corner, before two thousand and five, the land use was commercial, and the zoning was general commercial. Then along came a residential development project called Aqua Terra in two thousand and five, and they changed the land use designation to multifamily and the zoning to MF twenty, followed by a subsequent RPD. That project was never built, but that is still the zoning and comp plan designation on your property. What we are proposing to you this evening is to change the land use back to what it was pre-two thousand and five, a commercial designation, in this case, commercial East, which didn't exist back then, I don't think. Commercial East is the only one of your commercial flu designations that allows residential to also be incorporated into the commercial. So you very commonly do that, east of ninety-five, particularly on Dixie Highway, Casamar would be an example of that. So this is what allows a true mixed use in an otherwise commercial district. So we are seeking a commercial flu designation, but commercial East, so we can incorporate the residential component, and we are seeking to put the zoning back to what it was for probably a century or more, back to the general commercial. So those are the two items in front of you this evening, but allow me to share with you the site plan, which you're very familiar with. It is a mixed-use project with residential on the west half of the property and commercial use on the east half of the property. The residential component is an eight-story multifamily residential project comprised of three hundred and fifty-eight dwelling units, a mix of studios, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units, with twenty-five percent of the entire project being workforce housing. That equates to ninety units with restrictive covenant for forty years. The non-residential component on the east side is just under twenty thousand square feet of commercial and retail uses. As you know, we've been working to get a grocer in the site, and we are optimistic that that will occur. We hope to be able to bring confirmation of that to you soon. So this is imagery of what the project would look like. I'll walk you through this in the upper left-hand corner. That is the view coming over the C fifty-one canal from the south, from Lake Worth Beach into our city. This is, this site is the opportunity to create a proper welcome mat to the City of West Palm Beach, complete with artwork. On the upper right-hand corner is headed southbound on Dixie Highway at the intersection of Dixie and Gregory. So this is the commercial component that we are very hopeful will be a notable grocer that will serve the south end of the community. This is the entrance to the parking lot in between the commercial and the residential on Gregory Place. And finally, in the lower right-hand corner is a view from the golf course for the FEC Railroad looking east along the C fifty-one canal. All of that will become publicly activated usable space, along with an activated waterfront for public use. This is more imagery of what that publicly usable, accessible recreation area is along the C fifty-one canal. I thought this might be helpful. This is a list of your goals and objectives, published by you. It is everything on your wish list of what you wanted to occur on this site when you release the ITN, and we're very proud to say we are giving you every one of these items on your wish list. So again, our request is a small-scale future land use map amendment from MF multifamily to commercial East, together with a second ordinance also being heard tonight, which would be a rezoning from its existing RPD with underlying MF twenty zoning to general commercial. So let's take a look at each of those in turn. The current flu designation is MF, and you will see to the west is community service on the golf course, but everything else on Dixie Highway is some version of red. And if you look at your flu map for South Dixie Highway from the downtown to the Lake Worth line, you will see red on both sides. They're all some version of commercial or commercial East. And I tell you that because our flu amendment request is in context and conformance with both sides of Dixie Highway, virtually the entire length of the city. So we're putting it back to the way it was, and we're putting it to the same designation that all of Dixie Highway, for the most part, enjoys. The current zoning is RPD, and this is the proposed zoning, general commercial. Again, both sides of Dixie Highway are some version of commercial, whether it's general commercial or the NC that you see in the lighter red, that's neighborhood commercial. So we have standards in your code that we have to comply with, and you have to determine that we meet before you can grant the flu amendment or the rezoning. For the flu amendment, those standards are found in section ninety-four dash thirty-three D. We comply with all of these. Your staff concurs. I won't go through each of these individually, but should you have a question or desire me to do that, I'm happy to do so. Similarly, the rezoning standards are also found in your code, found in section ninety-four dash thirty-two A. We comply with all of these rezoning standards. Your staff concurs. And again, I won't go through these unless you would like me to. So let's talk about the public benefits facilitated by the redevelopment of this project. It will provide a mix of housing, including workforce housing, desperately needed workforce housing. It'll serve the south end community with public gathering spaces, quality retail, and hopefully that elusive grocer that we're all seeking. We will activate the waterfront and provide opportunities for the community's use of that waterfront. We will generate construction jobs and permanent employment opportunities, and we will put this back on the tax roll after many years of being follow land. We've had a lot of community outreach. I have several slides of it. This slide is your community outreach, not ours. So this is how long you and your predecessors have been working on activating this site, and you've been doing so hand in hand, in conjunction with the community. This is your city-initiated ITN process. This is your ITN process continued, plus our developer-led outreach. It culminated two months ago in this room at the December Planning Board hearing, when we received unanimous recommendation of approval on the flu amendment and rezoning that is before you this evening. We've also had a lot of collaboration with your staff. After all, this is a partnership with you. It's your land. You outlined what you wanted to see done here, and that's what we are delivering to you. We have a whole bunch of letters of support. These were delivered to you already. I think we had a hundred and sixty-eight letters of support from the south end of the community in support of the comp plan amendment and the rezoning. With that, I will conclude. It is a fairly simple request, and the more exciting stuff will hopefully come back to you in two weeks at your February twentieth meeting, when you get to look in greater detail at the site plan. So with that, Mr. Mayor and Madam President, I stand ready for questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you for the presentation. I would argue a point that you made, that we're not a welcome mat, but maybe we're a gateway to the city, so...
Yeah, people are not walking all over this, ma'am.
But no, I, you know, all kidding aside, this is definitely something that is illustrated by that long list of community outreach and activity that we have seen on this site from its inception of the city's purchase over twelve years ago, that we have talked about, not only within City Hall, but out in the community, that we want to see something done here. So I'm very excited to see this progress and looking forward to it moving forward. I was really pleased to see that you brought up the shared goals that we created in the ITN, and just to reiterate how we came about that, that it was through extensive community outreach and input that we received from the community. And I know that some of them included a robust mix of uses for economic impact and community benefit, a recognition of the waterfront's locations' significance, creation of a landmark through the gateway of our city in the south end. And I know that you're going to bring forward the site plan at the second reading, but I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about the activation of the waterfront and the public space that will be available on the site?
Sure. And I may ask, one of the design team, would you prefer to address the elements of it? If you'd like to say yes, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tyler Woolsey, Urban Design Studio, on behalf of the applicant. And I will go ahead and flip for you to one of the renderings as we discussed. We can take a look. So I will use this image in the bottom right-hand corner. As you can see there, you notice that the landscaping, where you see the significant amount of green that backs up to the landscape buffers, the actual planted landscape beds there are the top of bank, that's where our property ends, and everything that you see waterway of that is South Florida Water Management District property. So we've been coordinating with them over the last several months as to what level of improvement they are willing to permit within their right-of-way. Ultimately, the majority of the bank will be landscaped, as you see there, with minimal ground covers, sod, and the true improvement in the activation of the waterfront comes in combination with the activated pedestrian hardscape active spaces that are on our property, in conjunction with the dock that we're proposing that you see here. It will be a small craft dock. It will be providing people the opportunity from Lake Clark shores and the surrounding areas to bring small craft over to enjoy the site. It'll also offer folks the opportunity to come down there, take a seat next to the water for a few minutes. And then, the activated waterfront that you see actually spans the entire southern boundary of our site, providing a substantial area for community gathering events, and the, what you see in this rendering here is that central area where the hardscape pedestrian area is complemented by the central green, where you can really have the opportunity for a lot of community events.
Thank you. I appreciate that, because I think, as has been demonstrated by the golf park, that we have a lot of families in the area who really enjoy utilizing open space like this, and I think that that is something that I've been hearing from the beginning of the discussion of this project, that we want to make sure happens here. I have a few more questions, Mayor, but I don't know if others do as well.
Let's see if we have any other Commissioners with questions or comments. President Warren?
Thank you. My memory isn't quite as sharp as yours, Mr. Oyer, so, and perhaps staff can also remind me. This particular project, when we did the ITN, we also brought in members of the community that had the opportunity to come in and rank the applicants, as well as what they would like to see this project become, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Oh, okay. And the...
Got a different question? Are you following that?
Well, it's in relationship to this, because as it related to, as it relates to this, during that process, the applicant also identified that they would provide workforce and affordable housing for perpetuity, correct?
Let me ask the applicant.
So as part of the ITN process, the city had a goal and a requirement, rather, that twenty-five percent of the units be provided as workforce housing, and the language of the ITN is forty years of the life of the building. The applicant has committed to that, and we're providing twenty-five percent of the units, that's ninety units, under that workforce housing provision.
Thank you.
Any other ones before I go back? All right, Commissioner Lambert?
Actually, my question was along the same lines as the workforce housing, so I'm good.
Commissioner Ward?
And I know we've been through different iterations of this, and a lot of the projects that were presented originally before this was chosen had similar concepts. So the new issues, whichever is in the standards, which, not the screen, the standards that come into play is for the change to general commercial, what are the new issues which have arisen? I think I saw that in your list.
For the flu amendment standards?
Correct.
Sure. So those are contained in the staff report, but I can summarize those. So the staff identify, you have to meet one of the standards, not all of them. The one that the city staff acknowledges is that the city has acquired property, undergone extensive community visioning that you led, issued an ITN, considered various development proposals, and selected a development team to achieve your community vision, which is certainly different than in two thousand and five, when there was no community vision for this. It was a developer who wanted to build a multifamily project. So the test in the code is, has something changed in the community that necessitates the amendment of the flu? And that has, I think, been obvious, that you acquired the property because you didn't want it to be used for its prior intended purpose, not you, but your predecessors, and you had a different vision for what that would be. You wanted to address and activate the waterfront, you wanted to provide for workforce housing, you wanted to bring retail development... You wanted to bring retail development up to the street edge to activate it in a new urbanist fashion. So all of those were goals that were different than the prior goals. So that's the justification in the staff report, or I'll let them speak to it. But there are a number of the flu amendment standards that also could have been acknowledged in the staff report because one of those is change projections. You know, just to give you a sense, the population of our city has increased over 20% in the last 12 years. We have a very different demographic. We have a changing younger demographic. We need to provide housing for workforce like no other time in our history. We didn't have a redeveloped golf course at the time. So we've had a lot of changes in our demographic projections as well. And I could go through others. Only one needs to be met, and I'm happy to stick with the one that the staff identified, any one of which would justify amending the flu. Did I answer your question?
Just to follow up to clarify. So essentially, our vision, this was already considered necessary during our visioning process of what we would like to change to this new general commercial, or commercial east?
Yes. So if you recall, when you went through your ITN process, you always contemplated that these uses would require both a flu amendment and a zoning amendment because you knew, when you put the list that I just had on the screen, your wish list, that wish list contained uses that your flu does not allow. So you knew at the time that you created this list, by which you measured the applicants and unanimously selected this applicant, you knew that you would have to change the flu designation and the zoning to accommodate your own desire.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant before we bring staff up? Okay. Staff?
All right. Good day, Mayor, Commissioners, everyone. Jeremy Swaby, Planning and Zoning Senior Planner. I'll be presenting item 10.2, which is the first reading for the ordinances presented before you for future land use map amendment and rezoning. So for the future land use map amendment, ordinance 5086-24, as stated, a request to change from multifamily to commercial east. The maximum intensity for the existing future land use is 210 multifamily dwelling units. And the proposed allows for 420 dwelling units with 425,363 square feet of commercial space. The proposed commercial east designation allowed for a mix of uses, as stated by the applicant, which includes multifamily as well as retail and restaurant uses, which is shown in the pattern north of the site. The level of service shows potable water, sanitary sewer, traffic, and solid waste has adequate capacity for the proposed project. And as shown on the future land use map amendment, to the west, you have commercial, you have community service, which is where the West Palm Beach Golf Park is. Towards the east, you have, you have commercial, which exists, and you have auto sales as well as a restaurant. And to the north, you also have commercial east, which is what we're proposing, which accommodates for the uses of retail and restaurant. So for rezoning, the ordinance is 5087-24. And the rezoning, as stated, well, the rezoning accommodates for previously proposed townhomes, which was the last proposed project, which didn't come to fruition. And the request is to rezone back, rezone from residential plan development back to general commercial. So staff findings show that ordinance 5086-24 for the future land use map amendment complies with Chapter 163 of the Florida statutes as well as a comprehensive plan for the future land use element 1.1.5. Also, staff finds that ordinance 5087-24 for the rezoning complies with Section 94-32A of the zoning and land development regulations. So on December 19, 2023, the planning board voted with a unanimous vote of approval for conditions, six votes to zero. So staff therefore recommends approval of ordinance 5086-24 for the future land use map amendment and ordinance number 5087-24 for the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Any questions for staff? All right. Well, we have a number of cards that we will work through. Each of you will get up to three minutes, and don't feel obligated to take all three. Okay, I'm going to call out four names. Start making your way toward the podium. Dennis Grady, Donald Burgess, Ray Dorsey, and Rex Kirby. Grady?
Good evening. Good news is I won't take all three. We'll be quick. Mayor, Commissioners, Dennis Grady, still working downtown West Palm Beach for 36 years with CEO of the Chamber of Commerce of the Palm Beaches. This project, 8111, will create a total of 566 jobs in our community, 24% of which will be filled by small business, women, men, and minority-owned businesses. 90 workforce housing units, 20% of all residential units in the project are desperately needed in our community. It will create a great entrance to the city of West Palm Beach on its South End. The development team is comprised of local businessmen with generational roots in our community who also have many excellent projects completed throughout West Palm. It will also generate needed tax revenue from a piece of property that has been off the tax rolls for far too long. I urge you to adopt staff recommendation and approve item 10.2. Thank you.
Thank you. Donald Burgess?
Mr. Mayor, Madam President, other members on the desk. For the record, Donald Burgess, President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce of the Palm Beaches. The Chamber supports this partnership between Flagler Realty Development, Woodfield Development, and the city of West Palm Beach for the redevelopment of 8111 South Dixie Highway parcel. This collaborative effort will transform the currently vacant space into a vibrant mixed-use project, integrating dedicated public open spaces, residential units, some of which will cater to workforce housing needs, and retail spaces in the southern area of West Palm Beach. This initiative reinforces a commitment to revitalize in the community while addressing the need for accessible housing options and fostering economic growth through retail opportunities. In addition, as has been stated, more residents and foot traffic will improve the safety and security of the community. The planned 358 residential units are much-needed addition to our badly depleted inventory of housing solutions, as are the 90 workforce housing units that will be included. These are much-needed housing solutions that will benefit our teachers and first responders. We are delighted with the fact that the developers are committed to creating local jobs and utilizing small, minority, and women-owned businesses to bring this project to fruition. More than 560 local jobs will be created, which will have a positive impact on the local community. This is an important project for the South End of our city, and it is fully supported by our Governmental Affairs Committee and Board of Directors. We strongly urge you to give it your vote of approval as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ray Dorsey?
Mayor, Commissioners, Harvey Oyer took most of my points, so I'm a man of few words anyway, so it's going to be even fewer words now.
Just state your name.
Yes, I will. Ray Dorsey, 6301 Washington Road. I've lived here a long time. I remember when there were buildings on that property that were on the tax basis. And it was, it was a thriving area back in the 50s and the 60s when I grew up. I look forward to having activity there again. And I feel like there's three boxes you all need to check when you're looking at this project. You need to look, you need to make, do the right thing at the right time and the right way. The right thing you've already done. You've looked at multiple proposals, and you've picked the best of the best. The right time, the neighborhood is booming. I think there was another house on Olive knocked down this week that's going to be rebuilt with another house. And do it in the right way, which you're doing it by having local people that have a vested interest in building a quality project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rex Kirby?
Good evening, Mayor James and West Palm Beach City Commissioners. My name is Rex Kirby. I'm the founder and president of Verdax Construction. We're a local West Palm Beach general contractor. I'm obviously here, too, to encourage the approval of the 8111 Dixie project with Flagler Development and Woodfield Development. Rarely in all the apartments we build have we seen such a commitment to community in the way this project moved forward. You've heard all of the reasoning. I mean, a community space within the apartment, open space for use by the community for their events. Obviously, there's going to be significant road and sidewalk improvements that'll benefit the community. And the engagement of the waterfront, all of these things are incredible and will serve as a grand gateway into the South End of West Palm Beach. What I really wanted to make sure I pointed out, too, is, on the construction side, as this job ramps up, there'll be 200 to 300 workers employed on that site for a couple of years. And we are already engaged in outreach plans for making sure that we get the local workers as well as the local subcontractors, give them every opportunity to get engaged and be part of this project. So thank you. I hope you will vote positively and appreciate your time.
Thank you. Want to call out four more names. If you can approach the podium. Francisco Gill, Carl Watson, Steve Sylvester, and Jeremy Johnson. Mr. Gill?
Mayor James, Commissioners. My name is Francisco Gill. Most of people know me as Paco Gill. I've been in the, I've been a resident of the area for 20 years. And I've been seeing that site for all this time as an empty lot that has nothing to appeal and just a place for homeless, drug abuse, and crime. And I'm very happy to see that now we're going to be able to do something that is of great use for the city. But not only as a resident, also, as you know, we, my family and our company, we have a lot of businesses in the area with several hundred employees in Palm Beach County. And over the years, we've been having, our main issue has been where do we house our employees? I have, just to give you an example, in our main office, I have people that lives south of Parkland, Coconut Creek, north of Stewart, Hobstown, and Port San Lucie, with some of them having two and a half hours commuting every day. So I think that something like this is absolutely needed for the city, not only for the tax revenue that it generates, not only for all the employees, but also as a housing project that it will help us as employers and residents to have a place to house our employees. So I really encourage you to approve this project, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Carl Watson?
Hi. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Carl Watson. I live at 7620 South Flagler Drive. I've been a resident of West Palm Beach for about 30 years. And I'm here today to ask you to support this project. They've taken about all the notes that I have, so you don't have to worry about that buzzer going off. You have the development team here. You have one of the best contractors in the state of Florida, who just spoke, who's more experienced in building multifamily houses. But one, one way I want you all to look at this, most of y'all read the groundbreaking of PBA the other day at the Rinkers School of Business. If we're going to move that school from $35,000 up to $5,000, it's very difficult to get the professors and the support staff with affordable housing in West Palm Beach. And in fact, I don't know how we would do it. But this 90 units now that is for affordable housing will go a long way in satisfying the needs for the university. Also, y'all saw what happened when Casa Maria built those buildings there. Now you got Joseph there, you got Pink State, you've got the, you can see what all happened there on Dixie, on South Dixie. I live on the southern end of Flagler, and I go up Dixie. I don't just get on Flagler Drive and go to southern. But this is going to be really a great, representize the whole area down there. And I wish you to support this project. It's going to be a great project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Steve Sylvester?
Mayor, Commissioner? Steve Sylvester, 330 Hunter Street. I'm here in favor of the change in land use and rezoning. I'm a lifelong resident of the South End of West Palm Beach. After graduating college, I was one of the lucky ones coming back as a physical therapist. I could actually purchase a home east of Olive, you know, and then move different places. I'm also faculty at Palm Beach Atlantic University and a part-time paramedic at a local emergency room. And I can tell you for sure, the best part of this plan is the workforce housing. I mean, I've seen, working with nurses now that are contemplating leaving the area because they can't find a place to live. Closest place is Hob Sound at this point. And they're, they're top-notch nurses from all different cultures, and with Palm Beach Atlantic, too. And the saddest part is we have an amazing student body there, and they're graduating, and they are not going to be able to live in this town. So to be able to offer them something that I had, the privilege of having, growing up in the South End, good schools, I mean, a great community, I'm all for workforce housing. And also, I'm all for the plans that they have for the waterfront there. My kids and I, we've been fishing there for years, you know, and to have a place to stop and be able to eat and hang out and do stuff and clean up some of what's going on there right now is, I, I'm looking forward to it. So I am definitely in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jeremy Johnson?
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam President, and distinguished Commissioners. My name is Jeremy Johnson, and I'm here to speak on behalf of this project. And I'm hopeful that you will affirm it because I think it is the right thing for our community. My family and I have lived in the South End of West Palm Beach since the early 60s. I didn't come around until '69, but my family's been there. We own four properties in the South End. And I have seen, over the last 20 years, what having a vacant property on the south side of West Palm Beach has meant or has not meant to our community. So the notion that this property will be developed, it will create workforce housing, which is greatly needed in our community, and really make that South End continue to have the success that it's having, and the things that are going to come in with that, with this approval and with that project is only going to add to the betterment of the community. So I strongly encourage you to support this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Four more names. C. Todd Everett, Timothy Small, Brian Lamb, and Daniel Mirakovich. Mr. Everett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Commissioner. My name is Todd Everett. I am a commercial real estate broker since 1995 here in Palm Beach County in West Palm. Very familiar with Dixie corridor, having transacted over 30 sales along that corridor between Lake Worth and downtown West Palm Beach. And quite frankly, when I, when I first started, it was a very blighted area. As many of you know, I've been a nearby resident for over 20 years now. I also have been friends with principals on both sides of the joint venture for decades. And they are as good as you can get. I know that you know that because you picked them. This is a generational opportunity to create a gateway to the South End of the city. I think this is a project that will be a sugar spike that will amplify that South End region along Dixie. It's very under amenitized. We, we definitely need the housing, both the workforce housing as well as the market rate housing. So I also agree, and this is the right time, the right project. I emphatically support this project. It's what's needed. The community is behind it and I urge you to be behind it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Timothy Small?
Good evening, Timothy Small, 350 Winter Street. I just wanted to speak in favor of the project. I too am a native south end resident. Went to all the local schools. Saw my first movie at the Cinema 70 at the Palm Coast Plaza. And I look very forward to seeing a redevelopment begin that will move north along the Dixie Corridor and bring a lot of the things that we need, the amenities, as well as the workforce housing. All the kids that are in the schools in the neighborhood, all are going to need a place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Lamb?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Staff. I'm Mr. Brian Lamb. And I'm the President of the West Palm Beach Association of Firefighters, representing the 2801 Tuxedo Avenue. I also have lived in, around the area for all 53 years, going to the Cinema 70, King's Department Store that sat there for years, years before that. I'm so happy to see something's going to be done with this, this parcel of land. But I come for you, come before you tonight to express our support for the development of this parcel at 8111 South Dixie. This new construction will include additional workforce housing and hopefully guide many of our firefighters back to calling the city of West Palm Beach home. These 90 units of workforce housing are truly needed and a welcome addition to the city. And also, Mayor encompasses your vision of the additional housing for the workforce. Again, I want to thank you in advance for your continued support of this development as it's been presented this evening and I hope you adopt 10.2. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Daniel Marakovitz. Apologize by mispronouncing your name, sorry.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Staff. Danny Marakovitz, Traybell Housing, a workforce and affordable housing developer, resident of West Palm Beach. I just wanted to say how vital it is to have workforce and affordable housing in our community. Some of my points were already taken, but I'll make two of them anyway. The school systems, I've had many conversations with school board members on how difficult it is to hire and retain teachers, teachers who form our youth, teach our kids, help grow our kids, maybe become future Commissioners or Mayors. Also, we definitely need workforce and affordable housing for the hospital system we have here. Nurses are not being hired and retained because they can't live here. I can't imagine anybody here wants to walk into an emergency room and be told, "I'm sorry, it's going to be a couple hours because we're short-staffed." So, we need workforce and affordable housing for those two reasons amongst many others. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Four more names. George Ford, Rosie Gekas, Sabra Kirkpatrick, and Dimitri Komas. Mr. Ford?
Hi, my name is George Ford and I'm here in support of the project. I'd like to thank the Mayor and the City Commission for all the great work you all, you all are doing. One thing that hasn't been talked about today because the developers are so humble, I'd like to just take you back 30 years and how hard these families have worked for West Palm Beach. Couple of the different things, the Historic Museum, it's named aptly after the Johnson family because they have worked tirelessly to make that happen, along with a lot of the people that you've heard speak tonight. So, I think not only are the developers great people, but a lot of the people that you've heard come and speak are really the backbone of the community. And, you know, I think of the Class A office space that they built 30 years ago, the Flagler Center, and what great, what, what a great building that is and how great a shape it is. In my mind, it's still the best Class A office space in the city. Palm Beach Atlantic College, you heard some people come up tonight that were instrumental in that, in that college's success and still are really involved. Antique Row, big part of Antique Row. The really good part of Georgia Avenue, the industrial part, also a big part in that. My favorite though is the 711 and the Chase Bank and what they did there. And I remember because I own a couple of businesses right on Southern Boulevard when the Tattoo Parlor was there. And so, they have really invested all these years in West Palm Beach and their families grew up here. And if this project weren't anything but great and it didn't look like the Flagler Center, you could see them at the local restaurants and talk to them. And you could voice your opinion. And I believe that these buildings are going to be fantastic, not only for the workforce housing, but the public centers and the waterfront. And, you know, it's not a given that these places get redeveloped. The other day I went down, I was down in Sunrise and because of this project, I just decided to drive down Dixie Highway. You go all the way down Dixie Highway and you even come into the city of West Palm Beach and it's, 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 it's not, it's not a given just because it's South Florida that this is all going to be developed. The other thing I'd like to say is because of this development, you've already achieved a lot of your goals. The Palm Coast Plaza's been sold. I would imagine that this is, you know, it's sold because of the vision of these, these gentlemen and all their, all their families. So, anyway, I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rosie Gekas? Okay, what's your name, sir? Matthew Luciano, okay.
Yeah, 372 Macy Street.
Okay, go ahead.
I've lived down there, moved to town about 12 years ago. It's very interesting how successful these people have been soliciting the community and such. And they've been rebuffed by the only two associations down there. SENA rebuffed them, they actually opposed it. It's right here, "We oppose it." Opposition. So, that was over 200 people. And our own Commissioner is actually working harder for the developer than she is for us. It's really sad. I mean, I know he's a big campaign donor, but it's kind of sad. There's another, there's a second association. It's called the South Side Businesses Association. They don't like it either. He went hat in hand trying to get their support. They didn't like it either. I, I have a feeling that you're going to rubber stamp this anyway, but you guys did approve these guys and it was a great presentation for 210 units. We all liked the 210 units. Somehow this ballooned, mushroomed up. And if they all go to condos, that'd even be better for workforce housing. Make 210 and just sell them. Sell them at market rate. Wouldn't that be great? Workforce housing, right, everybody? And it's very interesting to see how many people don't live in the area that just got up here and say, "I've known these guys for quite a bit." We don't know where they live, so it's pretty selective on who gets asked where they live. And I think that's about it, but I think this is really about changing the zoning so they can get 64 units per acre. And, okay, 64 units. But, you know, if we go back to the 210, that's where we'd like it. And I told you this a long time ago, if you actually cut them up in parcels, you'd probably make twice as much money, single family. So, why don't you just go for the 20 million? And that's it. Thank you for your time. I do appreciate you sorting me out. Bye.
Thank you. All right. Rosie Gekas?
Good evening, everyone. I know I'm definitely outnumbered.
State your name for the record and address for the record, please.
Rosie Gekas, 330 Lidle Street. I can see Patrick and his team really did his homework getting everyone here that's in favor of the project. I would love to them to develop this project. SENA did approve the 210. Now we're making it 350, all because of workforce housing. Why don't we make the whole thing workforce housing, since that's what our community and neighbors need, right? We're not worried about the traffic that is backed up every single day that I ride on Dixie and Forest Hill and Southern. How are we going to expand those roads? What are we going to do with the massive traffic situation? Everybody's talking about, oh, school board can't, we don't have enough teachers. Well, we don't have enough teachers because, you know, the state of Florida doesn't pay teachers, so they can't really afford the housing here. 90, we're giving up 90 apartments for 350 eight-story building. I want a development there. I am not against development, but it needs to be thoughtful. We all keep saying, oh, the waterfront, the wa, really? It's the canal. That water's disgusting. Yes, people fish there. Snook is great. My son fished there. But I guess Lake Clark Shore will drive some of their little boats there and come shopping there. But the main problem which everybody's overlooking is our infrastructure. Our schools, yeah, we need teachers. But where are all these students are going to go? I'm, I'm actually a teacher. Our schools are overpopulated. There's not enough room for our students. We don't have enough teachers. But this 90-unit workforce housing isn't going to be enough to get more teachers in our neighborhood. I want you guys to think about what are we doing with our traffic? Our traffic is so bad. I drive Dixie, Forest Hill, Southern every day. Many people who came up to speak don't really live in our neighborhood. We have petitions. I have over 300 petitions, myself knocking door to door, people who were not aware of this project two years ago that everybody was talking. I saw here, it says we sent notice to 500 feet within the property. What's 500 feet in written letter? What, what houses are 500 feet within that property? It's a Win Dixie? It's a car sales, a restaurant? So, what is that, eight houses the letters went to? I mean, I know time is short and, you know, everybody else has forever to talk to, but we are not thinking of the bigger picture. And this is not something the entire community is backing. It's not. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sabra Kirkpatrick?
Hi there, Sabra Kirkpatrick, and I live in the south end on Elwa Place. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Over the years, I've had the pleasure of meeting most of you in person and I have certainly stood in front of you a handful of times, asking for community help and/or offering my perspective on the city initiatives. Today is no different. I stand here in favor of the Flagler Realty and their current 8111 South Dixie Highway development plan. Since 2015, the city of West Palm Beach has hosted public design meetings and has sought public input from the community. Many developers submitted plans and Flagler rightfully won the RFP. From conception, the south end neighborhood and its neighborhood association, SENA, were in favor of this plan. SENA even sent Richard Pinsky to speak in front of all of you in favor of the design and the build from the developers. Some of you may remember that I sat on SENA, the South End Neighborhood Association, for four years. During those four years, excuse me, I learned a lot about local government, but more importantly, I learned how small neighborhood organizations like SENA can either be helpful or harmful to its community in which it serves. So, in my opinion, the current SENA board is harmful to our neighborhood and few of its directors are there for personal gain and quite frankly, to be a thorn in your side, sitting on that commission. SENA is not pro-community, but instead it is run like a dictatorship. Those on the board who oppose President Richard Pinsky and/or past President Shannon Materio are strategically removed from said board and their voices are no longer heard or accounted for, mine also. There is no community within SENA. It's one-way or the highway. My reason for mentioning SENA and some of its board members specifically is because from day one, the senior association was in favor of Flagler Realty and its 8111 plan. To date, the majority of the SENA board members who are strategically not here tonight are in favor of this project. What I can tell you that I've learned over the years, sitting in these commission meetings, listening to public, is the loudest people tend to be those opposing growth, opposing redevelopment, and those folks opposed to anything positive, quite frankly. People who are in favor of projects tend to sit back quietly, not realizing that their pro-voices also need to be heard. These recent Trumpian-like tactics that have been used to scare residents into thinking that Flagler Realty is going to build the equivalent of the Empire State Building along the train tracks is laughable. And I pray that most of you sitting in this commission see past these trumped-up tales they tell. As we all know, it is usually the opposition who comes out of the woodwork with their bullhorns, cowbells, muscles, and scare tactics in public forums like this commission meeting, the Nextdoor app, which has been used a lot, Facebook Engage West Palm Beach and others. Those in favor sit quietly hoping that the noise subsides. Unfortunately, I am incapable of sitting quietly in the back of the room. Please hear me now, a resident of the south end who lives on Elwa. I am pro this development and I don't think any aspect of this project should be altered. The current dirt at 8111 has been vacant for far too long, harboring drug addicts, prostitution.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dimitri Komas, all right, we'll move on to the next one. All right, four more names. Shannon Russell, Alex Milan, Daniel Lopez, and Gina Perez. Shannon Russell?
Good evening. Shannon Kessel, 6815 Garden Avenue. I think I win the closest resident award this evening. You guys saw an aerial view of my home when looking at the site map. I'm here representing myself and my husband, Drake Kessel, this evening. We've lived there since December 2020. If we didn't buy it then, we couldn't buy it now. So, we're really blessed to have the house in this area that we do. He's currently finishing up fire school, so he's actually a part of that workforce housing initiative. We had friends recently moved back here who are nurses and had to move 45 minutes away because they could not afford to live within the city of West Palm Beach. So, I am very passionate about the workforce housing issue that we currently have right now. I am here to speak in favor of this project. I've been here several times now. I've been an active resident of the community. I've attended all of the community meetings. I've gotten the letters, et cetera. I'm aware they've done a very good job of communicating, so in case that is in question, it should not be. I think this project is a great thing for the neighborhood. It's going to have a great positive impact. This is not going to cause any more traffic issues than we are already facing. We could talk about that at another time. Forest Hill is already a mess. This is not feeding that issue. This is contained and separate, so don't think about that in this conversation. This project is exactly what I would hope for as a homeowner, would come into the neighborhood. I'm hoping the same thing happens to the plaza just north of it. Honestly, the summer here is we've been living with an abandoned lot that attracts homeless people and illegal dumping. And nobody is currently enjoying the waterfront except homeless people. So, please vote to approve this so we can get this show on the road and actually get to enjoy this property sometime in the next few years. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Milan?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. As a, my name is Alex Milan. As a property owner on the south end, I'm in full support of this project. It's providing much-needed workforce housing, so I ask that you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Lopez? Gina Perez? All right, one more names. Rick Rose, Richard Pinsky, Jim Jenkins, and Judge Joe Marks.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Rick Rose and I'm not a resident right now of the south end of West Palm Beach, but I am a resident in downtown West Palm Beach. I did grow up in this neighborhood however, and I happened to grow up with the applicants who are behind, of course, part of this deal. They didn't, I'm just getting over to speak because I think it's a great project and I think it would be good for the neighborhood there. I'm very passionate about that area. My, my parents met and fell in love at the Palm Coast Plaza. And I grew up there and so many projects have been proposed and nothing nearly this nice. And also, as you know, I'm very outspoken about projects that I don't think are good for the city. I've looked from every perspective on this project. You've got the golf course and train tracks on one side. You've got the canal on the other side. You've got commercial on the other side. The fact that it's perhaps taller than what many people would like, it doesn't negatively impact anybody as far as I can tell. So, I, I recommend to support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Richard Pinsky?
Hey, Mayor, President Warren, Commissioners, Richard Pinsky, 356 Valley Forge Road. Also here speaking as President of the South End Neighborhood Association. My remarks were going to be about the zoning, which I thought we were here for tonight, but I don't know if I should rebut what was said or, or talk about the site plan, which we're not supposed to talk about. The zoning issue, which I tried to raise at planning a zoning, is something that we'd like to see as a condition of approval. The sale of 8111, which is your property, by the way, so you do get to say how many workforce units you have. This is your property. If you want 200, 300, you would have to probably reduce the price, but it's up to you how many workforce you want. But this zoning was, and in the past, and Harvey pointed out, that was when it was privately owned land. Now it is publicly owned land by you. So, it is that we see the zoning change as a check and balance. The general commercial, without taking the time to tell you, as you know, everything that can go into general commercial, we're asking that it be held the same way the price is being held until the project is complete. That's when they take ownership of the property. It can also be a condition of approval for the zoning. They can build what they want to build, whether it's 200 units or the project as brand new since September, now 360 units. That can be a condition of approval as well. When they finish the project, award it with a general commercial and of course, land use commercial east. There's no reason to do that now. It is a check and balance to make sure that property, that development gets done. If it doesn't, and you can ask your development director, Rick Green, he will tell you that general commercial will travel with the land. If for some reason, as
Live six blocks from the project and have for many years. Here to speak in favor of it, with two hats on, first personally. As a very local resident, I'm very excited about the commercial. We haven't had any real development south of Southern, and this will be the first kind of signature development, and the fact it's right on our gateway is all the better. Second, I put on my PBA hat, which has been mentioned a couple of times, longtime trustee and now former Board Chair, Dr. Deb Schwinn. The President called me Friday and said that a conflict had come up and she really wanted to speak to you tonight and ask if I would sub in, so you've heard PBA mentioned very ti, several times. Four-hundred-and-twenty-five employees, four-thousand students, a major economic driver in West Palm Beach. Faculty-staff housing is a problem. We interview young faculty all the time. They are excited to come to our campus, they're excited, and we get a call three weeks later that says we can't afford to live there. You've heard it before, and eighty-one-eleven is not going to solve that problem, but it sure will help, and I would ask you to support the project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Judge Marks.
Good evening. I'm Judge Joe Marks. I live one mile from this project, and as I sat here tonight, it, it struck me how hard you all work and all the difficult decisions you make, and it reminded me how lucky I am to be retired from the bench. So, I, I have to, I have to tell you, it really did strike me that way. This project, I utilize that area every single day, every single day, and this really is a no-brainer. Of all the hard decisions, I sat back there going, oh my God, I'd hate to sit in the mayor's seat tonight, I'd hate to sit in Commissioner Lambert's seat. This is not one of them. This is an easy decision. The young lady who spoke previously about the vacant land, the homelessness, the garbage, it, it's really awful, and I, I love West Palm Beach. I've lived here almost my entire adult life. The most important thing about this project to me is that these gentlemen live here. I see them out walking, biking, running. If something goes wrong here, you can be guaranteed I'm going to say something to them. These are good people, and you have a track record with them. Some people come here and propose things to you, you've never seen, you have a track record, you know these are good people who do good projects. So my only complaint is that it's taking so long. I truly, truly hope that you approve this project for these gentlemen will all benefit from this. Thank you for giving me your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, I have a number of cards that did not want to speak, but they wanted their comments read into the record. Adam Tilska didn't want to speak, but didn't have a comment, so I can't read it. Gina Perez. I do not agree with the zoning change. I believe changing the zoning, allowing more units on this parcel to be, to be built would be negative, will have a negative effect on our area, impacting our traffic more than what is current, what it currently is. Okay. Anna DeAlverez. There are no residential buildings within five-hundred feet, only Wynn Dixie, used car business, and a Dan's fast food shop. How can this notice be acceptable to the senior neighborhood? The neighbors are benefiting from a gentrification of so-so. This project will set this back decades. Krista Marks, we are in favor of the project. John Balfin, I am in full support of this project. Alex Holliday, I would like to express my support for the eighty-one-eleven South Dixie Project. As a resident who lives close by, I am excited about the revitalization of the Dixie Corridor. Further, this project will bring much-needed housing for our city's essential workers. Robert Frisbee Jr., I am in full support of the proposed project, eighty-one-eleven South Dixie, as it will provide much-needed housing for our city's essential workers. This is an appropriate use of the land that will be beneficial to the city for years to come. Nick Kelly, wish to express my support for the proposed project, as a community definitely needs more housing for our essential workers. John Merton, Martin, I support Flagler Realty and their proposal at eighty-one-eleven South Dixie. Our city needs more attainable housing for our essential workers. Okay, so that's all the cards. Commissioners, any questions, comments? Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you so much. First of all, I want to say thank you to everybody who has stayed here until eight-thirty. That, that says the most tonight, but we certainly have the community will for this redevelopment. Even the few people who spoke in opposition of it said that they want something done here, and, and I think that that's why we're here tonight, is to see something done on this property and that it will be done to such beautiful standards. Not only the project, which we'll see when we see the site plan, but the landscaping, the development of the, of the public space has been mentioned a number of times. We have a developer and partners who have a stellar reputation in this community, and I know many of you talked about that we'll see them at Flanagan's, we'll see them out in the community, and we will tell them if there's any issues. And I know that as they have in the past, specifically, I remember on the seven-eleven property, that if there are any concerns, that they're extremely responsive, so I thank you for that. The community benefits of workforce housing. Prior to this meeting, we had our CRA meeting where our Downtown Development Authority Director talked about the dire impacts of homelessness in this community and the need that we have for workforce housing, and to have a project that brings ninety units online when just a few years ago, the mayor set forth a, a goal of three-hundred units in three years, and this would be almost one-third of that goal in just one project. I'm, I'm excited to see this come to fruition. But I also see this as a unique opportunity to shape the future of our city and, and that we're coming together on a property that the city owns, that we have said we want to develop, and that we have created a list of community benefits, that we are, we saw Harvey's presentation with all of the, of the checks of the boxes that, that we're doing there. But that being said, I have been working with many of the residents who spoke not only against the project, but also in favor of the project, because we did hear some concerns in the area of homelessness, of trash in the area, of some needs for beautification, and I'm sorry that Administrator Johnson isn't here today. I have been working with her on identifying some of the areas that the neighborhood and the residents have helped us to prioritize, and so I'm, I'm going to mention some of those now, and maybe she can give an update at the next meeting that we have on this, but we have talked about improvements along Gregory Road and have talked with this developer, as well as the owner of the property adjacent to this, about road improvements on Gregory Road, South Dixie beautification. I know that we have some projects in the South End about the bumpouts, and, and many residents have been wanting to make sure we improve those. South Olive crosswalks, including in street lighting, as well as the South Olive tree canopy. But what's, what's great about those projects is that we're working towards those now, but I give my commitment that I am working with administration to make sure that we prioritize those, because the impacts of this project will add more people utilizing all of those benefits in our city. But finally, I want to talk just a little bit about public safety, and I know that that has been a big concern, is that as we bring more people to the South End, making sure that we're paying attention to our neighborhoods, and we've had a number of residents who have committed their own funds, as well as reached out to others for fundraising, and I am hopeful that with administrative support and the support of this DA, is that we're able to match some of those funds and provide a camera program and coordination with our police department so that we can continue making sure we keep our neighborhood safe. So not only, I think, is this a commitment to this project, but it's a commitment to this area and to our entire city, that we're making sure that we're creating a safe and beautiful environment. So those were my comments, and I'm supportive and happy to give a motion if, if we're ready.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? President Warren.
Yes, I'd just like to say that I don't support all development, but I do believe in smart growth for our city, and I support approval of this future land use map amendment, because I believe that it is the prudent way forward to, to address the needs in our community and that it benefits West Palm Beach on many levels.
Any other questions or comments? If not, Commissioner Lambert, you want to make a motion?
Thank you. I move to approve ordinance number five-zero-eight-six-dash-two-four, a future land use map amendment to change the future land use designation of approximately six-point-five-one acres located at eighty-one-eleven South Dixie Highway from multifamily to commercial east. This motion is based upon the factual testimony presented, the application submitted, the staff report, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the request complies with the provisions of Chapter one-sixty-three Florida statutes and meets the new issue standard of future land use policy one-point-one-point-five of the city's comprehensive plan.
Second.
It's been moved in second at discussion. Hearing on, Madam Kirk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number five-zero-eight-six-dash-two-four, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the future land use map of this, of the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, by exchanging the fut, by changing the future land use designation of an approximately six-point-five-one acres parcel located at eighty-one-eleven South Dixie Highway from multifamily MF to commercial ECE, declaring the proposed amendment to the future land use map to be consistent with all other elements of the comprehensive plan of the city, providing for an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Lambert?
I move to approve ordinance number five-zero-eight-seven-dash-two-four, a rezoning to change the zoning designation of approximately six-point-five-one acres located at eighty-one-eleven South Dixie Highway from residential plan development to general commercial. This motion is based upon the application submitted, the staff report, factual testimony, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the request complies with the comprehensive plan and the standards in Section ninety-four-dash-thirty-two of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
Second.
It's been moved in second at discussion. Hearing on, Madam Kirk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number five-zero-eight-seven-dash-two-four, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the zoning map of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida by rezoning an approximately six-point-five-one acres parcel located at eighty-one-eleven South Dixie Highway from residential plan development to commercial, to general commercial. Declaring this zoning map amendment to be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city, revising the zoning map of the city accordingly, providing for an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item ten-point-three, public hearing and first reading of ordinance number five-zero-eight-eight-dash-twenty-four, regarding a future land use map amendment to change the future land use designation of approximately three-point-seven-four acres located at fifteen-fifty-one Forum Place from commercial C to multifamily MF and?
Public hearing.
Try to leave quietly, please. Public hearing and first reading of ordinance number five-zero-eight-nine-dash-twenty-four, regarding a rezoning to change zoning designation of approximately three-point-seven-four acres located at fifteen-fifty-one Forum Place from office commercial OC to multifamily MF and?
Public hearing.
Try to leave quietly, please. Public hearing and first reading of ordinance number five-zero-eight-nine-dash-twenty-four, regarding a rezoning to change zoning designation of approximately three-point-seven-four acres located at fifteen-fifty-one Forum Place from office commercial OC to multifamily high-density MF thirty-two. All right. Try to leave as quietly as you can, please. All right.
Should I get started?
Proceed, sir.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you for having us on the agenda tonight. I will try to be as brief as I can while still giving you the full picture of what we're asking for here.
Get that door closed, please.
So tonight, we are here, I do have my, probably what's left in the crowd, most of them are most likely my development team and consultants here. So we're here tonight, similar to the application you just heard, we are here for the first reading of a small-scale future land use map amendment. Our change is from commercial to multifamily. We're also requesting a rezoning from office commercial to multifamily MF thirty-two. I am going to briefly discuss our site plan, although that will not be considered until the next meeting. I would like to give you the full picture of what we're asking for and why we're asking for this land use change. So our subject site is at one-five-five-one Forum Place, which is north of Palm Beach Lakes and east of Congress. It is at the end of Palm Beach Lakes, so we have the canal waterfront to our east and then office to the south and west. The alley abuts us to the north, and then north of that alley is more multifamily thirty-two. As I mentioned, our future land use change, it's currently commercial in this area. We are asking to change that to multifamily and extension of that future land use that's located to our north, north of the alley. So our future land use map amendment standard, I'm going to focus on the changed, changed assumptions, and that is regarding the availability of affordable housing. So as we heard a lot from the last application and tonight, and over the last several years, the supply of affordable workforce housing is low, not just in the city, but in the entire state. So the demand for workforce housing is high and has been steadily increasing. So this application does seek to apply the provisions of three-oh-six-dash-two-two in order to provide workforce housing. So an additional changed assumption is that this, as you saw from the future land use and zoning, this area was heavily office. Since the time that this was developed, there's been a lot more demand and shift to office space downtown. There's nearly two million square feet of professional office, either under development, proposed, or that's been approved in downtown, so that's lessening the demand for office in this particular area of the city. So we find this to be an excellent use to change it from office to multifamily. The vacant land near the workforce centers is scarce. We are located fairly closely to the outlet malls, there's a lot of commercial, a lot of, there's schools in the area, so we do feel that this is an excellent opportunity to provide some workforce housing near those employment centers. This parcel is currently underutilized with a one-story office building that was built in nineteen-eighty. The parcel's not being used to its highest and best use, which is what we intend to do with this, so that it's an inefficient use of land and in addition to unrealized tax benefits for the city. So this, and this again was recognized by this Board here in December of twenty-twenty-two, when the City Commission directed the Planning Department to come up with an ordinance to increase the supply of affordable housing in the city. So we are here to, to utilize that. Our zoning, as I mentioned, is currently office commercial. We're proposing to go to MF thirty-two, again, matching that zoning to those parcels located north of us. Our rezoning standards, we've addressed those in our justification statement. Staff agrees that we have met all of those standards and comply with that. I'm not going to go through each of these individually. I do want to touch on a few items of how this particular request does align with some of the elements in the comprehensive plan that we believe are important and should, should be noted here. So one of the important things about this project and where it's located and about on our, our site plan, that shall get to in a minute, is we know that there's a lot of non-motorized plans. The transportation element talks about increasing bicycle and pedestrian facilities. We believe that goes hand-in-hand with the workforce housing. Cars, households that have less cars may, may rely on bikes and other forms of transportation, so we want to address how that applies to this project. The city has developed plans for an integrated network of non-motorized transportation corridors, which we plan to take advantage of. Again, utilizing various methods to construct that non-motorized transportation, which we are planning to contribute to. Again, sort of harping on that. So when we look at the city's mobility plan, our subject site is kind of up here in the upper left-hand corner. I'm going to bring that up a, a little bit of a zoomed-in portion of that. So this map you're looking at here, the yellow and sort of bluish-green areas are what the city is proposing as extensions of the non-motorized plan. This pathway in red is something that we are going to be building on the outside of our property in the city's right-of-way along the canal as a segment of that pathway that will eventually connect into the Lake Mangonia and the Turquoise Necklace Trail to the south of Palm Beach Lakes. So just taking a little bit of a deeper dive into how this connects to downtown, again, you can see our site there in the upper left-hand corner of this, and this is the city's downtown mobility plan. will eventually connect into the Lake Mangonia and the turquoise necklace trail to the south of Palm Beach Lakes. So just taking a little bit of a deeper dive into how this connects to downtown, again, you can see our site there in the upper left-hand corner of this, and this is the city's downtown mobility plan. So we feel it's important that we are, you know, very close and will be able to make that connection to not only allow residents of this development to move west, work westward in the outlet malls, but also have opportunities to work and live and integrate downtown as well. So again, our project site there, that yellow and blue are what the city's plan calls for, and we are constructing the red portion as part of our site plan. So as far as the housing elements, as we all know, that there's a demand for affordable workforce housing. The city's comprehensive talk plan talks about providing housing that is affordable below a hundred and forty percent. We're, we'll be utilizing the resolution and providing one hundred percent A M I housing. And one of the policies in the housing portion does talk about the city providing incentives for affordable and workforce housing and in the form of increased densities, reduced parking and setback requirements for affordable housing projects, which are going to be applicable to our site plan request. And then, again, just ensuring that there's adequate acreage and distribution of land zone for residential uses. We feel this being underutilized office is a great opportunity to provide that workforce housing we've heard a lot about the demand for. And my my last point here, not only is this near the non-motorized transportation, it'll provide plenty of parking, but there's also a few transit routes here that that are key. Just quickly looking at the alignment with the Palm Trans bus routes, again, zooming in on this portion here of Palm Beach Lakes and Congress, there are three stops here. The twenty route takes you over to the Tri-Rail stations in both West Palm and Mangonia Park, and the Route thirty three takes residents over into the West Gate area south of Okeechobee as well as north to the Gardens Mall. So this is a great opportunity to provide housing in an area that has multiple forms of transportation to access. As promised, I am going to touch briefly on the site plan to see what we are intending to construct here, if you were to grant us this future land use change and rezoning. This is a rendering entering the front of our building looking east. So here's our site plan here on the right. I'm going to add a few of the elements of it. Again, this won't be considered until the next meeting, but I want you to understand what the the project is asking for. We are seeking two hundred and thirty eight units of multifamily development. There'd be three hundred and eighty three parking spaces proposed with that. That is a slight reduction. We are going to be asking for a waiver from about thirteen percent of the required parking. It is an eight-story eighty-six-foot building. This is nineteen feet less than a hundred and five-foot maximum that the resolution limits. We do have a great amenity section here on the east side of our development facing the water. We've got, you know, pool, all kinds of sporting events there, as well as you'll see that gray outline on the outside of our property line there, that is that trail I was that I was mentioning, so it is intended to tie into the the alleyway there, which is meant to be used as non-motorized and then eventually will connect south if and when the product or the property to the south is either redeveloped or there's grant funding or something to complete that trail. But we are providing our portion adjacent to our property. So there's that note. And then, as mentioned, we are going to be providing twenty-five percent of this project will be workforce housing. That's equates to sixty units at a hundred percent A M I. We heard from a lot of those folks who support that tonight, so I don't need to go into that in any more detail. The city's resolution does have standards for special site plan review by the City Commission. Again, staff has determined, as we've stated in our justification statement, that all of those standards are met. I'll be happy to talk about those either tonight or at the next meeting when the site plan is considered. I mentioned there were a couple of variances and waivers associated with this project. We are asking a for a reduction in the number of required shade trees on site. There's a good number already located in the buffers. As you saw, this project is going to be highly amenitized, so we are asking for a slight reduction in the amount of trees that we'll be providing. There is a setback variance on the south side, which is adjacent to the federal property to the south there. It's going to be heavily buffered and we're asking for a sixteen point two five-foot reduction in that setback. The separation of access points, we are proposing to utilize the existing access points that are on the site. Through redevelopment, we are required to ask for waivers for those. Our site's at the end of a cul-de-sac, so we do we do not have a hundred and twenty five feet of frontage to even space those out. And then finally, as I mentioned, we are asking for a reduction of sixty-four parking spaces. Again, that's roughly thirteen percent. That takes the ratio from about one point seven to just under or one point six. We've worked with staff since we've submitted this and demonstrated in our justification statement that those standards are met to 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 grant those waivers, so we would ask that that be considered. And then, to close up here, I just wanted to highlight some of the community outreach that we've that I have done and our team has done. So we utilized, you know, online database to obtain as much information about our neighbors as we could, emailed them, spoke with them on the phone. I walked to each individual property, four, three, five, six, and seven that you see there, and tried to get in touch with the property managers, their contact information, emailed them the plans. We did meet with the applicants in building number three there, which is our neighbors directly to the west at sixteen oh one forum. We did go to their building and meet with them, discuss the plans, and try to alleviate any concerns that they had with this project. And finally, we we have done the required mailing and signposting that's required for this application, starting with the planning board in November of last year and then prior to this meeting as well. So that wraps up my notes about the site plan. So in conclusion, we are utilizing the city's ordinance enacted to provide more workforce housing within the city. This is a logical redevelopment of an underutilized parcel to bring it up to its highest and best use. Our building design was intended to minimize off-site impacts. I did mention we're about nineteen feet under the maximum height. That was meant, as we know, the higher you go, the more questions you may receive, so this was the most efficient design for the building to minimize the impacts and provide this desperately needed workforce housing. We'll be doing some infrastructure upgrades to the site, providing the off-site waterfront pedestrian pathway, as well as burying the power lines underground to hopefully alleviate any power outages. We do have staff support for this request. We agree to the conditions that they have listed in their report. We request tonight's presentation, testimony, and all application documents be entered into the record. And with that, I would ask you to please support this future land use map amendment and rezoning. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Good. I know we're talking about rezoning tonight, but can you assure us that in the site plan, the workforce housing will be mixed in with with market?
Yes, I have a very boring slide that I actually decided to take out. I can show you at the next meeting if you'd like. It is dispersed across all eight floors of the development. I do not, it's, so it's essentially randomized within the development. There are no separation of workforce and market rate housing.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any questions for the applicant before we turn to staff? Okay, we got Commissioner Lambert, then President Warren.
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation and your commitment to the workforce housing. When you talked about the waiver, and I think it was of eighty-three trees?
Yes.
And you mentioned that the site was highly amenitized. Can you describe that a little bit more?
Yeah, absolutely. So we've got, I'm going to go back to my site plan here. As you can see, we are occup, the building does take up, building and parking garage does take up a lot of the site plan. Starting on the north side, we do have, that's where the access, the two access points are to be able to provide public works, an area to pick up their, to the trash disposal. But just to the east of that, we've got quite a large dog park and pavilion over there. There's a pathway that goes kind of all the way around the the property and connects back over to the pool area. So we've got the the large dog park area, there's pickleball courts, more pavilions, a large pool area, I believe there's other yard games, and then the inside does have a gym as well.
So it looks like the site, you've utilized as much space as you can with the trees. So is that essentially?
Yeah, that was our, yeah, that was essentially where it made the the most sense and we trust our landscape architects that this is the most trees they can fit while maintaining a healthy balance and them staying alive, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
President Warren?
You stated in your information that owners within five hundred feet of the property received a mailer.
That's correct, yes.
How many residences do you believe that?
The residences, so it does, if I'm going to go back another couple of slides, there was each of the resident or the office buildings, there's not very many mailers associated with those. It hits at least those two parcels just to the north here. I I would say it's at least over a hundred residents in there. I can provide you with the exact number at the at the next meeting, but there's a good number of residential units that were that did receive mailers for this.
But in that you believe there was also business owners?
Yes, absolutely, the the office owners, and as I, some of those did receive mailers. I contacted as many property managers as I could get information from and sent them the plans, our timelines, so that they could either meet with us prior to the meeting or attend tonight's meeting. So we've, we have done our best to try to make sure everybody's aware of what's going on and been checking with staff to see if anyone's reached out. To my knowledge, no formal communication has been submitted for or against. But yes, we we have walked into all those lobbies asking for property manager info and sending them out.
Thank you for that. About how long before the state did you?
That was in August of last, of twenty twenty-three. And then, once I had their information and confirmed they were the correct person to talk to, I updated everybody in September, when we were scheduled for the hearing, October before we went to the, and October before we went to the planning board hearing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other question? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. I think this project looks great and I'm excited to add more workforce housing. I think after tonight, if we if we pass this, we'll have passed more than a hundred and fifty units of workforce housing in tonight's meeting, which is really exciting. So I just wanted to ask you what your timeline was. I don't know if that was in the slide or I missed it.
I don't have the ti, I don't have it in my slides here. I do have the owner of the project is here if you'd like to, I, or I can bring that information to the next meeting. My understanding is kind of as quickly as we can get this thing going, they want to get these units online.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Yes.
Any other questions for the applicant before we hear from staff? Okay, thank you. Staff?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, everyone. For the record, Ann Volsi, Planner Development Services. Today I'll be presenting ordinance number fifty eighty-eight dash twenty-four for future land use map amendment and ordinance number fifty eighty-nine dash twenty-four for a rezoning. So for the background, we have three point seventy-four acres, existing is a commercial office building of seven thousand seven hundred square feet currently existing on the site. The applicant pretty much went over what they've submitted and we'll be seeing that other portion at the next City Commission meeting on the twentieth. So here we have the existing future land use designations. The site is highlighted, is highlighted in black in commercial. On the north side, we have multifamily, south side, commercial, west side, commercial. East is conservation, also Lake Mangonia, and further east is single family. As an analysis, the change is from commercials C to multifamily M F and will increase the development potential within the subject area from point seventy-five F A R floor area ratio to thirty-two dwelling units per acre or sixty-four dwelling units per acre per resolution number three oh six dash twenty-two, which provides interim standards for the City Commission to review the workforce housing. So the L O S analysis shows there is adequate capacity for drainage, traffic, potable water and wastewater, solid waste, and schools with impact fees to support this future land use map amendment. So here we have a visual of the future land use change from commercial to multifamily, and we see multifamily to the north and single family to the east across Lake Mangonia. The future land use map amendment has a summary of findings. It complies with chapter one sixty-three of the Florida statutes. It also complies with the comprehensive plan, future land use element policy one point one point five change assumption regarding the availability of workforce housing. So the rezoning will be from, excuse me, office commercial to multifamily high density, M F thirty-two residential, where the key thing here is that M F thirty-two allows for multi multifamily residential. So here is a visual of the zoning change from office commercial to multifamily high density. For the rezoning, the summary of findings, the proposed M F thirty-two zoning designation is consistent with the proposed future land use of multifamily. It's compatible and similar with the land use and rezoning patterns of the area, and it has met the rezoning standards of section ninety-four dash thirty-two of the zoning and land development regulations. Planning board meeting on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, they voted to approve six to zero, the future land use map amendment, case number nineteen sixty-seven, and also the rezoning planning board case number nineteen sixty-seven A. Staff finds that the ordinance number fifty eighty-eight dash twenty-four for the future land use map amendment complies with Florida statute, chapter one sixty-three, complies with the comprehensive plan, future land use element policy one point one point five change assumption, and therefore recommends approval. Also ordinance number fifty eighty-nine dash twenty-four, staff finds that it complies with section ninety-four dash thirty-two A of the zoning and land development regulations, zoning rezoning standards, and therefore recommends approval. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for that presentation. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I was just curious, have we, when when an applicant has requested a tree waiver, have we ever requested that they utilize maybe the equal amount of funds and put into, do we have a tree fund that it could be put into or trees put elsewhere?
Yes, there is a tree trust fund.
And so is that an an option if 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 there's a waiver?
It is an option, but that is not what the applicant is, that's not what we're doing for this particular project. So they're requesting for the variance for that, from that section of the code, not including the ones that are for workforce housing.
Commissioner Lambert, Angela Van Plann, Zona Administrator. For this project, what staff is doing, they're waiving the trees for affordable housing units, and then the trees that they're waving for the market rate units, they will have to pay a fee, so a tree mitigation fund.
Okay, great, thank you. Mayor, have another question if I could?
Yes.
The applicant mentioned in his presentation in compliance or in that our comprehensive plan section mentioned a hundred and forty percent A M I, but that this project is at the workforce is a hundred percent A M I. Is that due to discussions and negotiation with staff? Because I know that we're really working towards at least a hundred percent A M I now and and less, and so I'm pleased to see that.
Well, no, they they pretty much use the resolution, resolution three oh six dash twenty-two, and that sets the different levels. and that sets the different levels for which they, they will provide workforce housing.
Got it, great.
Mayor, if I can clarify that? So the definition for workforce housing under the comprehensive plan is currently 140 AMI, up to 140. That is being amended till come forward to you next month.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, hearing none. I don't see any cards. So if there are no other questions or comments?
I apologize. I do have to revise my ex parte disclosure on this item.
Okay, yeah. Make sure we do that for the record, sir.
Thank you. As to item 10.3, I have had our ex parte communications with a representative from the applicant. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, nor have I received any expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made a part of the record.
Very good, thank you. I'll entertain a motion if there are no other comments.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 5088-24, a future land use map amendment to change the future land use designation of approximately 3.74 acres located at 1551 Forum Place from commercial C to multifamily MF. This motion is based upon the factual testimony presented, the application submitted, the staff report, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the request complies with the provisions of chapter 163 Florida statutes and meets the new issue standards of future land use policy 1.1.5 of the city's comprehensive plan.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
If it's moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing on, Madam Kirk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 5088-24, in ordinance of the city commission of the city of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan of the city of West Palm Beach, Florida, by changing the future land use designation of one parcel located at 1551 Forum Place, consisting of approx, of approximately 3.74 acres from commercial to multifamily, declaring the proposed amendment to the future land use map to be consistent with all other elements of the comprehensive plan of the city, providing for an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing in opposition, motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Fox?
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 5089-24, a rezoning to change the zoning designation of approximately 3.74 acres located at 1551 Forum Place from office commercial OC to multifamily, high density MF32. This motion is based upon the application submitted, the staff report, factual testimony, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that this request complies with the comprehensive plan and the standards in section 94-32 of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Madam Kirk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 5089-24, in ordinance of the city commission of the city of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the zoning map of the city of West Palm Beach, Florida, by rezoning one parcel located at 1551 Forum Place, consisting of approximately 3.74 acres from office commercial OC to multifamily, high density MF-32, declaring this zoning map amendment to be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city, revising the zoning map of the city accordingly, providing for an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing in opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now it's time for comments from the public. Do we have any cards? No? Okay. One once, one twice, okay. Now we'll turn to comments from the dais, beginning with you, Madam President. No, those general comment cards really related to 8111, when you read the substance of it. And plus, we don't take, because they were saying they didn't want to speak, but they want to read in, we don't read in general comment. Yeah. Oh, thank you. Okay, Madam President?
Oh, well, I, I feel like I have cotton balls under my eyelids.
Feel, don't, 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 don't feel like you got to say anything. I'm just saying, don't feel obligated.
I'm just being transparent.
It is 914.
I'm just being totally transparent. That, I, I'd just like to say, oh my goodness, to the Black History Month honorees today, what an amazing group of diverse individuals that have contributed to the landscape here in the great city of West Palm Beach, and that they have cared so much and continue to give so much. So kudos to them and kudos to you. The, as a member of the Palm Beach County League of Cities, we do have a grant, excuse me, a scholarship opportunity that's open. You can visit palmbeachcountyleagueofcities.org. And the scholarships are open to high school seniors as well as municipal employees that are seeking to continue their education in municipal government. So please visit palmbeachcountyleagueofcities.org for additional information related to those opportunities. It is, it is the William Kirkshank, Kirkshank Scholarship. And the closing for that is February the 16th, February the 16th. And lastly, I'd like to say congratulations to Commissioner Ward on her appointment to the healthcare district board by the Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners. I'm looking forward to seeing great things as she pursues her platform to address homelessness and mental health issues in Palm Beach County.
Very good. Okay, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I too wanted to commend you, Mayor, and my fellow commissioners on the selection of all the honorees tonight. That was truly moving and indeed, the, the future is bright because of those who have served our community in the past. So thank you so much.
That's it? Oh, never mind. Commissioner Ward, before she changes her mind, no, no, just keep it moving. Commissioner Ward. No, no, Commissioner Ward, please, go ahead. Once the next commissioner speaks, your job is over. Please say one word.
Okay. Well, thank you for the congratulations, Commissioner Warren. I really appreciate it. And yeah, the, the beginning of the, it seems like forever ago, but the beginning of the night was a fantastic way to start off our long commission meeting. And it, it's, you know, it continues to these types of events. And thank you, Mayor, for doing them and repeatedly, because it kind of pushes me to continue moving forward, given how many great citizens that we have in this area. Just quickly, I wanted to mention the Broadway Corridor draft plan presentation is being held this Wednesday at, from 6 to 8. This is February 7th at the Manatee Lagoon, which is 600 North Flagler. This is our second community meeting. Dover Coal is presenting some of their findings. They've been meeting with staff repeatedly and, and other commissioners and plan to present that. There's also another additional meeting on February 8th from 6:38 to 8 at the Rise Community Center at 72339th Street. And then on February 9th, from 10 to 11 a.m. for Spanish-speaking residents at Esperanza Center located at 3600 Broadway. So please try to make one of those meetings and provide your input, because they've been working hard and we're very excited for the future of the Broadway Corridor. And then the police chiefs meeting, which is usually held on the second Wednesday of every month, is actually being pushed to the third Wednesday, which is February 21st, because everyone's just going to be out celebrating Valentine's Day and not going to a police meeting. So we're moving that meeting. It's still at Gaines Park at 6:30 February 21st. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much, Mayor. I have a couple of meeting announcements as well. This Thursday, February 8th at 6 p.m. at the Heart and Soul Park, we will be having our next Northwest Community Meeting with the CRA. We have a lot of projects to discuss. And someone from the police department will also be in attendance to answer questions about some of the really tragic situations that we've been having in the Northwest. And so I definitely encourage anyone to attend and meet with residents that night. The next day, we have a very exciting ribbon cutting and grand opening of P&amp;L Corporate Solutions. They will be celebrating their grand opening in the historic Northwest at 822 North Tamaran Avenue. This is P&amp;L Corporate Solutions. I think we all know Paula and Lamont. And so it's a very exciting day to welcome another business to the historic Northwest. And I hope to see you all there. That's all I have, thanks.
Commissioner Vadozzi?
Thank you, Mayor. And to Commissioner Ward, congratulations on your appointment to the healthcare district. I guess with you being on the healthcare district now, Board of Commissioners and a commissioner here and a commissioner on the CRA, you're a triple commissioner now. You got three commissioner titles. So congratulations. Just wanted to thank all of our city employees for all that you do to keep the city running, to our police officers and firefighters for keeping us safe. And then just to follow up on what Commissioner Fox had mentioned about, you know, some of the violence that's happening in some of our neighborhoods, just wanted to, you know, say to our police officers, and I want to encourage the police officers to be visible in all of our neighborhoods. Remember that our residents do support you. Our residents want to see you in their neighborhoods. So thank you for all that you do.
All right. Just a couple of things. First of all, kudos to you commissioners for choosing such great recipients of the, the awards this evening. Obviously, without your input, it could not have gone over as well. And I don't know about you, but I, I think the word is getting out that this is a really special honor. I mean, the recipients all seem to really be touched and moved that they were selected. Just need to announce for the public that the Parks and Rec Department invite residents to apply for the Palm Beach County Summer Camp Scholarship Program. Applications for that particular scholarship program will run from January 29th through April 12th. And the scholarships are offered to eligible families who have children ages five to 14 and special populations with children up to 17 years of age. They will include a full scholarship to day camp for the entire summer. Don't forget that President's Day is going to be honored on, observed on Monday, February 19th. And so City Hall and Mandel Public Library will be closed. Our next commission meeting will be held on that Tuesday, February 20th at 5 p.m. And speaking of presidents, as, as many of you may know, I did have the occasion to welcome President Biden at the tarmac last week. But since we're so short on time, I had to tell you about that later. Good night. This meeting is adjourned.